Good evening, welcome to Town of Rutland Office of Select Board Regular Meeting for Monday, October 21st, 2019. It is 6:00 PM. We are here in the lower level of the Rutland Public Library. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This meeting is called to order. As per usual, these meetings are being recorded for transmission on Rutland Public Access Television and also on YouTube. They are typically live. Could I get a motion to sign Treasury Warrant 9 and Payroll?
Make a motion to approve Treasury, to sign and approve, or approve and sign Treasury Warrant Number 9 and Payroll.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'm gonna jump right in. Welcome. We have a poll hearing scheduled for 116-118, Brentonall Drive. Hereby open that hearing. I believe we have somebody here from National Grid. Come on up. Is this your first one?
Yes.
Welcome.
Welcome.
You're gonna do your name and who you're here to speak for, and then talk to us about the location.
Okay, so my name is Robert Williams. I'm here speaking for Jay Lucier. This poll placement is to feed both houses, both lots. We're doing it to remove an aerial trespass problem, so with its location, we'll be able to feed both houses without a problem.
So we have here an order for joint or identical poll locations, notice having been given. This is with National Grid in Verizon, New England. Is there anyone else here to speak on the poll hearing locations? Dick?
Sure.
Please, you're doing it because of what?
It's called an aerial trespass. So when a service comes to the house, it'll, if it goes over another person's property, it's, we're not allowed to do that. So we have to make sure the service drop doesn't encroach on anybody's property. So to serve them without doing that, we have to put the poll there.
Thank you.
Alright, if you look in your open session folder, you'll note that the Director of Department of Public Works has reviewed the petition, which I believe is a resubmission. Is that right?
I would be unaware of that.
Okay. Or at least they've re-reviewed it. Does anybody have any questions from the board? DPW found it acceptable.
Did, are you, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Are you aware of the recommendation of the DPW Director?
I am not.
He simply asked that the poll be installed two to three feet north of the stake location, or approximately four feet from the edge of the traveled road.
Two, three feet north of the...
I have a copy of it here too for you, if you'd like a...
Yeah.
Maybe if you could take a look at that, see, and let us know if that'd be a problem?
It's the second ha, or the, starting the second sentence in the last paragraph. We simply ask.
I don't think it would be a problem. Um, I would have to let him know, and he would have to move the stake location to approximately, to where they want, but, um, yeah.
So I know this is one of your firsts. In committing to this, it's going to be part of our motion tonight, that you've agreed to move the poll, and this is something that DPW will then check on. If it's something that you feel like you need to go back and check and come back to us in two weeks, we can absolutely do that.
I, I wanna say, no then. I wanna, I, I think the polls should be going where we, we have it placed. So is that appropriate, or?
Well, what's, um...
Or you guys wanna go off what the DPW says?
Well, no, of course, we're gonna, uh, what our, uh, they're, they're concerned about snow events, obviously. Brentonall Drive is already a concern, and there's issues with the plows getting through. So what we can suggest to you is, we can continue this hearing, we can go back to the parties, and then you'll come back here in two weeks with a, yes, we agree to this, and we can give you a copy of this letter, so they can review it. And obviously, we all have the maps. I know you guys have the maps. You can come back in two weeks, say, yep, we've agreed to the request of DPW, or we have not, and we would then go from there.
Okay, uh, yeah, I don't see a problem with that. We can work with them. I'll, I'll let Jay know, and we should be able to figure something out, and we can continue the hearing.
And a two-week delay is not going to impede any process or progress going on?
I...
To that point, real quick, can I, through the chair, ask you a question? This for the chair. If we can approve pending this being okay, simply because the letter's dated a few weeks ago, my guess is that somebody has already received an okay list because of the specificity. And if you talk to somebody tomorrow, and they say, oh yeah, we already agreed to it, we talked to somebody about it, it could just be as simple as that, that it was already discussed, right?
We can, we can, we can basically approve it with the condition of, the condition of the DPW's request, meaning it will have to, it will only be allowed to be installed if it's moved to where the Director has requested it.
Where they request it.
And that doesn't hold anything up. They don't make you schlep on back here, so...
Yeah, and if there's a problem, you come back.
Yeah.
Want us to do that?
Yes. So, just so I'm clear on this, if we install it to as where they specified, you guys will be okay with this?
Yes.
Oh, 100%.
Yeah, we're gonna make a motion tonight.
Who's "they"?
The DPW.
The DPW, yes.
We're only okay with it if you install it where...
Where the DPW.
My guess is based on the timing of this letter, that somebody's already reviewed it and taken a look at it.
One would hope.
Okay, great.
And your bosses know how to get in touch with the DPW Director, I'm sure, anyways, if there's any questions, so.
Absolutely.
So good job.
Alright.
So hold on, we're not quite done. I will entertain a motion. Actually, I'll close the hearing if there are no more questions. No more questions? Okay. Hereby close the hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the petition for poll placement on Brentonall Drive with the contingency that it is placed in the area expressed from the letter provided by Director Joe Buckley on October 7th, 2019.
Perfect. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, you're done.
Did, Mike, you gave him a copy of the letter, right? So you have that letter, and you see where it says at the bottom?
I will, yeah, I did. I read that. I have...
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you were all set.
Okay, thank you.
So we are signing two certifications now. Technically, one of them is for you. I would suggest you make a point of coming back, making plans to come back to our office in the next few days to pick it up, once you've confirmed that that location change was okay with everybody. That way, we'll all know how to proceed, and you'll be able to pick it up.
Alright, I'll make the motion.
Great.
Becky's running a little late, she just didn't tell me no.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, so we have our Treasurer Collector coming in for some borrowing documents also for us to sign. She is not here yet, so we're gonna move on and go on to Mike, Town Administrator update. Is that alright?
Yeah, that works.
So just some updates before the next part. The, we had some leaks at the roofs for the library and the public safety building. These roofs were all put on within the last year. So Commissioner Cassinelli and I called the roofer who put them on, who came out on Saturday and did repairs to both roofs, so they should be fixed. We'll find out at the next rainstorm, and if there's a continuing issue, then the roofer said he'd come back. But we believe we've taken care of it then.
Sorry, Mike, when did you say they came out to?
Saturday.
Okay, so potentially, they would've known from the rain last night, right?
Yes, but we haven't heard anything yet.
Right.
Was there a common theme? Because it was both done by the same roofer, and both roofs leaked. Was it because of a specific installation error, or?
Yeah, it was the, um, the underground, the underneath membrane didn't go up far enough.
Okay.
So it was seeping in behind the shingles.
Do you know what the repair entailed, Mike?
Not yet. Just because we were busy putting stuff together today. I have a meeting with Willie tomorrow to go over that, so I can get you an update on that too for the next one.
I think a scope would probably be...
A good idea.
What was done. Something, because I mean, it's a little concerning, it's less than a year old, and those roofs were expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah, documented, so that...
Exactly, yeah.
Good job.
The police...
If the underlying didn't go far enough, that's usually an issue with, with ice, not with rain, because rain goes downhill, so...
I thought it was the flashing is kinda what you meant when you first described it, on some of the pieces at the top of the roof in the library specifically.
So the flashing's been an issue at the police, at the public safety building more, where they, um, the flashing's facing the wind. So when they put it down, we had a strong storm a couple of weeks after, so it blew some of the, he had to come back and re-flash the roof. But that was done back in February. So this is a separate issue that we had with the roofs.
I definitely had to see the, uh...
The scope of what they did. Yeah, I can get that for you for sure.
What the issue was.
Yeah.
Doesn't sound right.
Yep.
It's also a note for the Buildings Committee, that whole clerk of the works thing, which we've gotten away from a little bit on some of these projects, really, that's the importance of it right there, that somebody could've been knowledgeable, who was watching the project as it went through its processes.
Yeah. The Police Department's doing a charity No Shave November, and you can go to their Facebook for, they did it last year. They're hoping to raise a little more this year, so you can go online to see how to do that. Last thing, I just wanna update you all on an issue we found out today. The boiler in the annex was having some issues, and we could smell the oil. So I called Joe, and that, Joe and Willie went to check it out. They called the contractor who we have on file for that unit, who found that there is a hole in the, in one of the vent pipes. So they are having the contractor go out to fix that. When the contractor came out, he told us that that hole had been there for two years, and it was just a agreement that they would just put half of the usual amount in that tank at a time, and then when it ran out, they'd come back and put the other half in. That way, we could save money fixing it. But my and Joe and Willie's idea is, that's something we just need fixed. It is an underground storage tank, so we will have to dig a little bit in the parking lot, but not far, I think maybe only two, three feet at the most. But where we did find that out today, and it has been an ongoing problem for at least two years that we know about, that is something we'll be fixing within the next week, week and a half.
Is this RJ McDonald?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to circle back to your letter B, and we'll go to Becky, or do you wanna keep going?
Yeah, let's, we can do that.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Alright, so we're gonna put a pin in Town Administrator Update. If I could, it's hot, welcome.
Aye.
I hear you have important papers for us.
Yes. This is to renew the monies that we are borrowing annually for the balance due for the Rutland Heights property. We are borrowing, the amount that's outstanding now is $362,000 for the Rutland Heights property. This also includes the ambulance and police cruisers that we authorized at the last special town meeting. Actually, I think it was maybe, I'm not sure exactly when it was, yes, I do. It was Article 13 on the May 12th, 2018 meeting, it was authorized. We're borrowing that on a, included with this ban on an annual basis, and we paid down $68,000 on that. It worked out where it was better for us to do it on an annual basis for five years. The interest rate, we went up to, took the bids from banks, the interest rate came in at 1.67 from TD Bank, which is, last year, for the amount, we got a 2.55%. So interest rates are going down, it's a good thing. The total interest that we'll pay, the total amount that we're borrowing is $602,710, and the interest that will be paid in FY '21 will be $10,037.30. So I have all the documents here for everybody to sign, and... Let me make sure I get them all. See where the stickies are.
Okay.
So, we need to make a motion. Jeff, could you read, Becky, is it, it's the one document, right? That's the ban. He just needs to read that one piece of it. And that's, and you need to include the total amount, Jeff, but not the percentage interest and not the dollar interest.
Yeah.
Where's the ban?
Yeah.
Okay, so, make a motion that the board approve as presented by Town Treasurer. The amount, 600, 602,700, it's written, $602,710 for value received by votes passed on, votes passed on May 17th, 2008 and 2018?
Yeah.
Okay. Of Chapter 44 of the General Laws, promised to pay TD Bank, NA, or upon presentation or surrender thereof, TD Bank, in sum of that amount. So, does that make sense?
Yes, so we are approving borrowing, the ban, with the ban. Thank you.
Approving of the borrowing with the ban, as presented by Town Treasurer.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, Becky, for doing it.
I would like 1.67%.
Yeah, that's...
Becky.
Excuse me, through the chair, balance left on the heights was...
I have $362,000 written down.
3,000.
362,000. Isn't that amazing?
It's coming down slow.
Yeah, we're paying, we're paying about $30,000 to $32,000 a year is what we're, what we're doing. This is the ninth year we're renewing it. We, if it's not paid off after the 10th year, we will have to permanently finance it. And we could hopefully bundle that in with maybe some other refinancing, unless we can pay it off.
Oh, I, I think we need to talk to RDIC about that, and ensure that the remainder of the balance can ideally be paid for, with the solar monies coming in, if that's gonna time right, and so that we don't have to instigate permanent borrowing for the property.
Right, yeah, I think what they're saying is that the, um, the solar farm that's going in up there, the lease payments should pay that off. I mean, everything's kind of on hold with National Grid right now, so I don't know.
Right, so timing is gonna be everything. I mean, it's possible that, it's possible that if the timing didn't work out, then the next time this comes up, Becky, so next year, we'd wanna maybe even have a discussion about ensuring that either free cash, or worst-case stabilization, we're temporarily used, and then replenished with monies coming in from the RDIC solar project, so that we could pay it off and, and call it a day, and not have to have you go through the permanent borrowing.
What, what period of time were we talking with the solar?
I, I don't have an answer on that.
National Grid just left.
Yeah, National Grid.
I doubt he knew. I don't think he knew.
I mean, I think they put a hold from what I've, in discussions to, because we were gonna find out if this, if we were gonna have the closing on the solar farm, and we're gonna be receiving money, it would affect this bond not being able to be tax exempt, because we'd be making money off of the, off of the, um, the land. So that's, it's not happening within this year. So this is a tax-exempt bond still. So I don't know exactly. That would be a question for RDIC, or...
Yeah, just about, maybe another year roughly, I would say. If everything goes into place and, and everything is lined up. It's looking, it's looking good at the moment, so. Need a few more signatures, and then that'll, from the government, we'll be ready to rock and roll.
Becky, what is our, dropped out on that? It really is exactly a year away, yeah? Because we're in our ninth year.
I'm not sure if we can renew it for one more year, or if it's, because this, this is our ninth, and I'm not sure if, like, we can do it for 10.
If it's inclusive, yeah, right.
And then you can't do it for the 11th, or if it's like, you can't do it for 10.
But then, as you just said, if we do it, and we possibly can't make a tax exemption, what would be the value?
Right.
If we can pay it off.
It would be, it would increase the interest rate, but we'd have, you know, paid down another $30,000, or whatever we can budget for next year. And so it will be less, you know?
It feels so close now, and so manageable, that it's, I can't imagine us not taking some steps to make sure we, okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I just handed over my agenda to somebody. I don't have it anymore. Oh, thank you.
Oh, there it is.
Alright, thank you, Becky. Was there anything else?
No, I just, I'm just gonna wait.
Just waiting. Alright. While signatures, while signatures continue...
I'll wait, I'll decide.
Mike, back to you.
So, when I was looking at all of the employment contracts after we missed something that had to go on the town warrant, I noticed in mind that I was supposed to have a formal performance evaluation done by the board in June, after my first six months were completed. And then my contract after that says, after the initial review, is when I'm supposed to sit with the board to discuss my goals and objectives to complete, to then look at those after my first year is done, which will be January 13. So since we all missed it because of everything else that was going on over the summer, I requested it to go on the agenda for this evening. That way, that part of the contract's met, and we can move on to the next one and bring everything back forward. So I submitted a cover letter explaining all of that, the procedure that I found in the town's documents for evaluation of the town administrator. And then this, I also attached my working outline, that I keep internally of different things that we've accomplished, or ongoing, or have coming up front soon, and then added a little bit onto it at the end. Just because I keep it internally, you guys should see what we have going on as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Step down if that's from the, up here, if that, I don't know how this works. It's...
You don't need to step down, because we're not doing the evaluation right now.
Okay.
Yep. I think as far as the board goes, if we could set a rough idea of where we wanted this to head, probably take it, you know, right at this point into December, so that he can move forward. January was kind of that fresh year, and a set of goals and objectives in front of you. So I don't know how many of you need some more time to look at this, but what we wanna do first, you know, as we look at this letter, I would actually suggest, and you all can decide what you, how you want this order to go, but what you might wanna do is actually start with number six, and each of you will write your formal letter outlining an evaluation of the town administrator's performance. Now, we've, in the past, used documents that were structurally helpful in doing these evaluations, and for the most part, our evaluations have stopped, as a board, when a town administrator started. So the evaluations that we had been doing were fire chief, police chief, et cetera. When Margaret came on, we did do the evaluation process with her. It was, it was a form of this, but not exactly like this. So we've got some flexibility with it.
Do we have, like, a point or something system?
Yes.
Like a standard template that we can...
We can. We don't have to, but we can. So I think what we'll do then is have the, his office actually send that document out. And I think what we'll do then, Mike, is for next meeting, what this board maybe can do, and you all let me know if this is okay, is we'll review the document, see if we like it, and we'll go from there. And that'll be our evaluation document, once it's edited.
Sounds great.
That'll give everybody time to review as well, what Mike's written down here.
And you want a letter from us by...
Well, I think we'll hold off on the letter for now. We'll try to put together the rubric that we've used in the past, and see what people think of that document. Yep. We'll see what people think of that document, see if it needs any edits, tweaks, additions, subtractions, whatever. Once we're all happy with the document, we can work off that. And then what we'll probably do is have you submit that document, however it looks, plus any additional notes in the form of a letter, and, and we'll go from there.
I think too, that also, to echo the chair a little bit, provides, because it does need to be done during open session. I know you've had a lot of interaction with the public, and we've received a lot of feedback, and it allows them to kind of look to see how much you've accomplished, and kind of be aware of what's going on. So I think that's, that's great.
Alright, so next meeting, we will be reviewing the document that we're gonna use to review. Good times. It's a process.
Review the review document.
That's right. Alright, is there anyone here for public comment? And I'm going to preface this by saying that we've had multiple requests to be out of here before kickoff. However, you are very welcome to speak, as long as you want.
I'll be quick.
Okay.
Some weeks ago, I sent you a letter about the intersection of Route 68 and Watchusett Street. I haven't seen anything happen. I also spoke with the Secretary about a week ago, in regards to some trees obstructing the flashing light on 68. Did you get that? Did she mention that?
I got it, yeah. Joe's been made aware. It's a public shade tree, so we're scheduling the hearing for the branches.
When you come down from Community Center, you don't see that light till you get down the bottom of the hill, really. There's about three limbs that could easily be taken off.
Yeah.
So no, nothing's been done about the speed limit, or...
It's, there's an article...
Electric signs, or...
It's in the warrant.
Yeah, there's an article in the draft warrant to see if the board will place the money, so Joe can go take care of that intersection.
We have to work with DOT though. So I mean, that's the issue, is it's, it's time-consuming, because we have to get the Department of Transportation involved to conduct a study in order to do anything over there.
Well, I thought it was turned back to the town to be able to do a study, and that, that would be the study to determine whether the speed limit would be dropped or not.
So there's a couple things going on here. Dropping a speed limit absolutely is DOT, and it's time-consuming. And you're not, Mr. Sherman, you're not the first person that's been asking about this, because I think a lot of people, especially right after an accident, you wanna see something happen. Director Buckley, as you know, takes a very methodical approach to these things, and he wants to make sure that we're kind of crossing all of our Ts, dotting all of our Is. So we do have an article, if you're staying for the whole night, you'll see it, so we can get some signage, which is what we've been talking about. We'd really like to, I think, mimic, or at least I would, mimic the signage that we see at the 68-62 intersection, right? Which is the flashers with the strobe, and the stop signs that are solar-powered, and then have some lighting to them, and they're expensive.
Has Mr. Buckley mentioned the conversation that I had with him some weeks ago about the signage?
No, not to me.
Okay, I, I don't wanna bring it up here, but I had a conversation with him. I don't wanna grandstand this, but...
Okay.
Well, let me ask you this. What, what's the worst that could happen, if you go out and stick some 40 mile an hour speed limit signs out there?
You lose funding.
For what?
The state, state funding. That's the worst that could happen. I mean...
Why would you lose the funding, though? I don't understand. Funding for what?
Chapter 90.
Yeah. And we just have to play by the state's rules. I mean, that's what it comes down to.
I see where you're headed. And I, I, you know, part of the answer too is, if we do it there, what's the answer next time? Because Pleasantale will come in and say the same thing. And then what happens when it's 68 and 56, and they're gonna say the same thing. And what about Fisherman's Road? Dick, who wants to make it one-way. And I'm pretty sure if Dick had his way, it would already be one-way as of, you know, 15 minutes, when he changes the signs himself. So I, it's unfortunately, this slippery slope, where we need to do things the right way.
And we do have to have a positive working relationship with DOT, which I think we do, but it's just a matter of making sure that, that Joe, like the chair said, dots his i's and crosses his t's.
I mean, there's been many accidents at that intersection. The last one was pretty horrific.
Yeah.
I know, and I know you were there. And you know, and I, and I hate to keep listing them, but think of Central Tree Road and Main Street. I think that one is...
It's terrible.
Yeah, that's a terrible accident waiting to happen. And it's, it's awful to think that sometimes we're, it sometimes feels like we're being so reactive, and we'd rather be proactive, and not have to see what, you know, what you saw with that accident.
I think the warrant article, though, addresses some of those issues, so...
Yeah, and that's a few more weeks, but at least the nice thing about special town meeting is, the minute it's approved at special, the money is available to be expended. It's not like the May town meeting, where you have to wait until July 1st.
But July, I won't be here for that.
Okay. You'll be missed?
No, I won't.
You will. Thank you, Mr. Sherman.
I'll be in a one place.
We, we appreciate that you care about this. We do.
Well, I do care. I've been going through that intersection for four... Well, I do care. I've been going through that intersection for forty years.
Yep.
And every time I go through that intersection, I get nervous.
Yep.
I've gotten so, I slow down to forty miles an hour. And I'm sure there's a lot of unhappy people behind me, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Name and address.
Sean McLaughlin, one seventy-five Berry Paxton Road.
I know, we'll let Mr. Sherman go with it.
Uh, I just wanted to get an update on the soccer fields.
Yeah.
That's why I'm asking to find out what is going on. Rutland New Soccer Board says they're waiting for the agreement so they can go to their attorney and then proceed through that, so.
It's on the agenda tonight for executive session for the board to review the latest negotiation that we had with Rutland Soccer to see when we can. If they agree, it moves forward. If we got some other stuff we have to talk about with them. That's a difference there, but.
Unfortunately, we can't invite you to the executive session, but hopefully.
I want to get this thing done. I mean, we're wasting time here.
So we're waiting.
We're talking about it tonight.
You know?
We got a special meeting.
I know, but this should have been done previously.
Uh, in fairness, if you think about the timeline for Marsh Field, I think baseball would say that we're practically rushing it through.
I'm not worried about the baseball field. I'm talking soccer. I wanted to get this thing up and running by twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty?
Yeah.
It's in sixty days, seventy-five days.
The fall, the fall of twenty twenty.
I don't think, based on anything that should be a problem, as long as there's nothing egregious in what we review tonight, I don't see why not, right? That's a pretty reasonable time.
No, you're going to wait, you're going to meet tonight, your executive meeting, and, uh, discuss this. When, uh, so should I, my understanding should be tonight you'll have a decision, so possibly tomorrow?
So.
When you get some more information?
So being.
Proceed forward?
So being unable to talk about contract negotiations because they are executive session, I'm going to give you hypotheticals. The two hypotheticals are, we go into an executive session and there are still questions, which means at a future meeting, you will see future executive sessions. Or we go into executive session and progress is being made, and this could be for anything, any contract. And at a next meeting, you would see a signature of soccer contract on the agenda.
And then you would be receiving it.
Yep.
But lawyers get paid hourly, so my guess is we'll have questions, so.
One show.
Okay.
But that's what you want to look for. And you know, you know, we meet every two weeks and this would be on the next regular agenda, either way.
You need two weeks, I'll be here.
All right.
We'll see you then.
If it's on the agenda, I mean, we can, we can have somebody reach out, obviously, you know.
No, that's all right. I'll just, I, I don't mind coming here and listening to some of the issues that we have.
Hanging out, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for executive, uh, excuse me, not executive, for public comment?
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Are you here for that? Public comment?
No.
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 Waiting it out. All right.
Then I, may I?
Yes.
Please, um, I had mentioned before, I, I, I don't know if it's, uh, something that's happening with Joe, DPW, five thousand dollars. He wanted to buy a stumper. And as I brought up, you know, that is a very small stumper. And it'll take somebody a lot longer to stump a stump than, it'd be better to be, you know, contracted somebody outside that's got a regular big stumper to do things like that. And it's my feeling that the five thousand dollars should go in for the crosswalk signs up here that we've been waiting for I don't know how many years now. To get them put in. And it's getting to be a point where I'm getting tired of bringing it up all the time. It's something that between Town of Rutland and DOT should have done. I'll leave it there. Has the select board gone to Holden? Not Mike, the select board. Gone to Holden Select Board and talked about a byway because I, I, you guys know what the traffic situation is down there and it's only going to get worse. But I feel that you people should go down and sit down with them and have a one-on-one talk with them. Either that or come up with another method of transporting people out of this town to get to wherever they got to go.
And listen and out.
Yeah. It is, it's, I've never seen so much traffic in my life and it's only going to get worse. Leave that up to you. Holden objectives, how, how are the golden objectives that you wrote down at the wood studio, how you come along with those?
I actually just asked Mike to send those to me because we haven't had a chance to really re-review them. It was so busy all summer. And I think as part of Mike's review process, we'll be going through goals and objectives. A lot of those are very predicated on his time commitments for things too. So, yeah.
Yes, anecdotally, we've talked about quite a few of those.
We have.
Yeah.
And I think some of it's been pretty positive, so.
And I think some of it's kind of the groundwork for how to address some of them.
Right.
For some of the boards and commission stuff, we talked about, you know, incorporating that into the master plan and, you know, which is a lot of pieces that need to happen before
Yeah.
that can get crossed off.
It'd be interesting to see how, how progressing and I'd like to see it progress.
It was funny, Dick, I should share this with you and it's, it's handwritten, so you know, I, I do see what you do and I mimic it. But I had a list when Margaret started and I looked back at it and now it's been almost five years and it was amazing how much actually had been accomplished when looking back. And it, and they all took time, but. Yeah, we'd gotten there, so.
And my last thing to say, this may not sound very welcome to you, but, um, I would think that it would be a very good idea if sometime you have your select board meeting and the camera crew in the back here can take out. Ask Joe to move out, um, a bunch of trucks out of the bay and go down there and have a meeting down there.
To where?
That's a good idea. DPW building.
In the garage itself.
We've never had a meeting.
Why?
And, well, that's only the beginning because then I feel that you probably should go to the community center or we're already in the library. But I'm just thinking, you know, move it around a little bit to see what it's out there.
The traveling circus?
I feel like Pierre's about to just sprint out this door and just start yelling at us, but we could ask.
No, I mean, to me, for, you know, it's just one of those things I've, it's, it's been years since I've been down to the DPW. But I was always very pleased at how neat it was down there and I'm hoping it still is. And, and to me, how would you know unless you went in there and, uh, set up?
Pretty confident Joe's going to tell you it's neater.
That's good. Prove it.
Or we could just take pictures and put on the green screen behind here.
That's right.
Different town locations.
Sean, you had a follow-up.
I, I just had a question. Um, the crosswalks, what signs are you talking about and where?
Senate Maple Lab right up here, way back, Mass DOT and the Town of Rutland got together and they talked about that they do need lights. You push a button and the, you stop the traffic in order to get the people across, the pedestrians. And to me, I don't want to see anybody else get hurt.
Dick, you noticed that the last semi-decent crosswalk sign was absolutely flattened this morning, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I saw it yesterday morning when I went through town.
Was it yesterday? I thought it was today.
We did just purchase three new of those crossing signs that were flattened this morning, um, for Main Street. And we are, I am looking at grant funding now that the state released that new grant database to see if we can get those flashers. That's our, yeah.
We need to have something, it really does.
Has, has anyone?
I'm sorry, Sean, you kid. I'd like it to be an open conversation, but hold on. Mike, do you, did you have a response for anything from Dick's list? Because I felt like there was something early on.
Well, that was the signs. I was just going to say that we bought the, the smaller signs and then we're looking to find funding for the larger ones.
And Dick, were you done?
Yes, I am.
You were, okay. Last night.
Has anyone gone down to the state van down here and asked them to put any of the signs up?
You mean District Five for Mass, uh, for Mass Highway?
Yeah. Has anyone contacted them? Because I had them put up a sign over at my house a few years back.
At your, huh, okay.
Because it's a, it's a state highway.
Yeah, state highway.
Because I live on one twenty-two. So I went down there, talked to them and they, I mean, they had it up within two days. Has anyone tried to go down there and talk to them to get some signs or anything? There won't be the, the elaborate electrical push-button ones right now. I mean, that could be work in progress, but something temporarily to.
Between Palmiguslet and Maple Lab, Town of Rutland owns equal, just like, uh, equal shares, I'd say, as Mass DOT does.
Right.
So whatever they come up with, they're going to say, we want X number of dollars from you. I'll lay odds.
Uh, just to answer you, Sean, you know, obviously DPW has the direct relationship with Mass DOT, Mass Highway, and yes, they're always asking for stuff. And I'll give you an example. Every year we ask for the crosswalks on one twenty-two A to be repainted in time for school to start. And I can't remember it happening once, just if that helps. Anybody else have public comment? Otherwise, we're going to go on to old business, oh-three-eight, community hall, study update.
So in your town meeting warrant packets, um, when we see that later on tonight, there's going to be the final, except for approval of the board, drawings that the architect submitted. The architect came out to, um, my office today and met with Willie and I, to give a cost estimate for the next stage of the project. We had a placeholder in there. The placeholder was just a random dollar amount. Even when I met with finance on Thursday, I said that number is going to change. That's just dollars in there. And they gave us that dollar amount and that is included on the draft warrant for turning those drawings into construction documents. Right now, they say the wall is going here. Those documents say even though it's a temporary fix because the ten-year goal is to expand the building in the back. These wires need to be put here, these outlets, these phone jacks and so on to go in this wall that we drew here. Um, and then it's bidding out the project and then construction oversight. So that would be the clerk of the works for, um, that building, um, just under fifty-nine thousand dollars. But, um, we don't have to approve that part tonight if you feel that it's, the town's not ready to do that yet. But what we should do is at least get a final look at the drawings. So at the next meeting, now that you have the packet here to study, um, to go forward. The drawings that you'll see do keep the stage, um, in the third floor as was requested. With a temporary wall closing that off and making it a temporary, this top of the stage a temporary storage closet. For records or different other plans and stuff like that. That way, when we do do the big move, that's planned to do the addition onto the back of it. All the offices that are in that auditorium level then move out and we have that auditorium still for our use.
And that, the allocation, the study you're talking about now would not need to be bid because it falls under engineers and architects?
Correct.
So we can contract with somebody we're familiar with?
Yes. I have to say, this architect's done a really good job. He's followed up a lot. He's the only one who showed out when we did bid out the project to begin with when Bob was here.
He seems interested in the building.
Yes.
I'm not sure why. I don't know motivation, but.
Very interested.
Are we aware then of what doing anything to this building is going to trigger in terms of ADA compliance and additional state requirements that, I just want to make sure that we know and we build in a contingency for that because that's going to be an enormous expense.
Yes. So that'll all come in the construction costs that we're still getting from them. That fifty-nine, it's fifty-eight-seven is, if you want the exact number, is just to convert the, the drawings to plans and then bid out an oversight. But this will put us into full ADA compliance, so that's why there is a full working elevator, uh, extra staircase with an area of refuge that's required by the ADA. Why we need the extra staircase is the one that was there, was built when the building was built in thirty-eight. Now, it's because the elevators lock in the event of a fire. It's a reinforced staircase that if someone who isn't able to go down the stairs is on the third or second floor and need to get out, the firemen can pick them up at that landing at the stage. So it's a waiting area that's extra secured in the event of a fire. So that's part of the ADA. The building will need to be sprinkled, um, as part of this project as well, so.
The elevator itself could be well in excess of a million dollars.
It could. But then Hubbardson's elevator was seven fifty, so it all depends on.
Bargain.
What they, what they do.
Yeah.
But I wa, those plans are in your packets for you to review before the next meeting, so you have some time to look at it. And if you have any questions, oh, just let us know and we can go from there.
Weren't you also looking at a grant?
Yep. Yep, we'll know.
Specific to the elevator?
Yes, the elevator as well as the front walkway, um, because that seems to be patchwork currently. The, we asked for, I want to say it was nine hundred thousand dollars for the elevator, but that was bought like high and then twenty grand for the front steps.
What, what grant opportunity did we apply?
ADA.
It's through ADA.
Yeah. Um, but we won't, so we won't know that till mid to late December as a dollar number there. But if we appropriate the money, and I mean, the appropriation's not going to come until the warrant discussion. And we get the grant, then we can just move that money out at the next town meeting. But.
This will be a great conversation for that stakeholders' meeting that Mike is trying to set up with all the, the multiple boards and committees and commissions. And, you know, to Mitch's point, the goal here for this building is to not do any work that would then be antithetical to a future major expansion that everybody sort of knows is, is needed at this point.
Exactly.
So that any of the work is a stepping stone to the big project that will take probably years in planning.
Yeah. I will say, when I met with the architect, um, I made clear that there is a grow stage. This is phase one out of a multi-step process. Which is why orig, the original documents that you saw a couple mon, uh, just over a month ago, maybe two, had a smaller elevator. It was called a, they call it a Lula, limited use, limited access.
All those, yeah.
If we were to add the addition on, and this is why I said, no, go back and redraw them, is if we had the addition on, then that elevator would have gone out into compliance and we had to put a new elevator in then anyway.
It needs to be able to fit a, uh, what's the medical term for the stretcher that you?
A garden, yeah, it's the.
The Lulu does not, a stretcher, the Lulu does not fit that.
Correct.
In the elevator.
Yeah.
What do they have in the library? I've never, what do they have here?
There's an elevator there. I don't know what type of elevator it is, but we do have one here.
You would know if you were in a Lulu elevator. It's small.
It's almost like a lift.
Yeah, it's, it's key locked. It doesn't need an extra machine room.
I'd say Saint Patrick's, that might be, but that might even be prior to.
Alula.
It's, it's, yeah.
Lula?
Yeah.
Lulu?
Use and access. So they, they did take the growth of the building into account when they drew these documents up. If it's okay, I was supposed to mention something in my updates, if it's okay, because it's related to this, I can say it now if you'd like. The, uh, we, Laura and I did reach out to the different boards and commissions about, um, doing the stakeholders' meeting for the warrant. So we spoke with Harry from CIPC. Um, I talked to FinCom at their meeting on Thursday. And, um, Dave, Laura and I talked to Norm Anderson from the planning board, uh, this morning. We're looking at Thursday evening for that joint stakeholders' meeting, um, for the board, the planning board, finance committee and CIPC. CIPC is already meeting on Thursday night.
This Thursday?
This Thursday night.
Yep.
So, um.
Seven?
Seven is the CIPC meeting, so CIPC is requesting that we start our meeting at eight, um, so that they have time to get from that meeting to this meeting here.
Lots of meetings.
That's fine.
Lots of meetings, absolutely.
Yep. Uh, finance is also posted that evening and the board is also posted that evening, so.
Where's it going to be?
Um, in this room. The big room's booked.
Oh, really?
Could be a problem.
Yeah.
Just a curious question, um, not to ignite any commentary. The building, the community hall building is not on the state historic registry.
Correct.
Would it be less expensive to just replace the building?
Tear down the rebuild?
Yes.
You get a lot of buff trying to tear down that building.
I know.
Who would want to see this building?
There's so many, there's so many environmental concerns with a building that age that we're going to run into when we do it. I mean, the elevator is just one component, but we put one in a historic building, the old Armory Building in Worcester and it was over a million dollars to have an elevator put in. There's just so many issues with that building that are going to trigger all sorts of compliance issues with the state. It's going to be expensive.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be a town meeting decision. The town's not been historically good about historic preservation, if that makes sense. And obviously, some of the things were unavoidable. It lost the hotel, you know, in a fire. Uh, it lost the old, oldest primary school building. Then we tore down the primary school building. This one, we sit there and it's kind of interesting to hear from certain people who says it's not that old. And then you sit there and think, well, actually, it's close to a hundred. And at what point do we?
Was it the thirties? That was the?
Yeah, thirty-eight after the hurricane year, right?
Eighty, eighty years old.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So at what point is it old enough to save?
Well, I mean, should we, is that something, would we, want to approach the state on that or is it something that you think is worth doing?
Our initial environmental concerns are asbestos.
Of course.
In the tiles.
Everywhere.
Yeah.
Everywhere asbestos.
But, um, to be honest, I hadn't thought of that. We have a couple of other environmental concerns with other buildings that have kind of taken point in our mind. Um, we have two underground storage tanks, um, that we're looking at.
Yep.
So I can add that to the list.
I think the tough thing, I mean, I definitely think it wouldn't hurt to look into, but I think the tough thing is where the town is limited interiors meeting space as it is. And so to, if the plan were to demolish that and rebuild on the same site, we would be out that entire building for an un, you know, a potentially however long it takes.
Or I mean, could we build something on a separate site too? I guess would be another question.
Right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So. Yeah.
Yeah, for that much money and repurpose the community hall. Yeah, for that much money, repurpose the community hall for something else.
Yeah. And then we also, you know, I know that we had talked about eventually the town wants a new senior center. We're still going to own the community hall building, or the community center building. We could repurpose that into something as well. It's just an idea. I mean, the expense of these kind of renovations for a building that age.
Yeah. I, I think this is a good stakeholders' discussion, and, you know, it might be that that ends up being one of the articles tonight that we wait, see what everybody says on Thursday. Quick comment?
Quick comment. Where are you going to move the people out to while you're doing the work in that building?
Sorry, they're not being used right now, right?
Trust me. We're on camera. I can't say a thing, but no.
We'll build something over Rutland Heights, and we'll put them in there.
But I mean, if you had to move the people out, you know, for the duration and set them up, you know, you've got to think about that, too. Where is it going to go, and what's it going to make impact on somebody else?
Most towns do trailers, like, right? And some of the towns are using trailers even now as a semi-permanent
Well, I think of the community center in the, in the middle of the hallway, build all the little offices in there for the
That'd be great.
Are we going to have to mitigate lead in that building?
Not sure yet. If it is, it's in the paint.
Well, I mean, yeah, but that's, that's also, you have to subcontract that out. It's going to cost a fortune.
Yep. Any remediation would have to be subcontracted.
As, as we know, from the primary building.
From the old hotel?
Oh, God. All right, I'm, I'm moving on. That was just supposed to be an update. Onto new business. Oh-seven-oh Barbara Campbell has been very, very patient. I'm so sorry. Barbara, you know what? I, I could have gone and done this after the public hearing. Thank you for sitting with us and enjoying this conversation. Ms. Campbell is here to be appointed to the three-hundredth anniversary committee, and we should note for the record that it's in part because we have another person who will have to be a member
Ex officio.
Ex officio. I mean, we know you wanted to be on no matter what, right?
Yeah, been on the Forte de la Comit, for a hundred years, so.
Yeah. Could I get a motion?
Make a motion to appoint Barbara Campbell to the three-hundredth anniversary committee. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for
Oh, sorry, wrong way, wrong way, wrong way. Thank you for sticking with us.
So we now have five members again that are voting, so we can have that committee now meet.
Excellent.
I'll give this to, does she need to get sworn in with Anita?
With Anita.
Yes.
So I'll give that to Mike to
We're going to have this for you at Community Hall in Anita's office, so she will swear you in officially. And you can do that anytime.
Yep.
Before the next meeting.
Yep.
Yep.
One of the other members we appointed a couple weeks ago isn't a Rutland resident, because we have the bylaw that says you have to be a Rutland resident to be appointed to a commission. He's serving in an ex officio liaison.
For the three-hundredth also?
Yep, for any town board commission.
Well, why, just out of curiosity, why this person wants to serve if they're not a resident?
He's on the Forte de la Committee. He's got a lot of family in town.
Okay.
Was a resident at one point.
I think he's actually within a stone's throw of Rutland. Is that right? It's kind of, this is kind of killing him.
He was born and brought up here and lived here all of his life until two years ago, maybe, he moved to Spencer, but
He's a special case.
His heart is here.
Yeah. All right. Mr. Stellings.
So included in your binders, a request for signatures on a couple of documents. First is a thank you letter to Henry Stetson of Stetson Masonry in Paxton. He provided the, the stone and the services and the grinding for our marker for the fifty-year time capsule behind the Rutland Historical Society. He came out, and he chiseled off a piece of granite and put the engraving on there, the year twenty-sixty-nine, and on the back TC for time capsule and RF for Rutland. So it looks like a proper cornerstone that the scouts were parambulating. So he did that. He donated his resources and effort and, and all that. So I'm asking that the board sign a thank you letter to Mr. Stetson for that.
Uh, is that, is that a motion?
To motion that the board sign a thank you letter to Henry Stetson for his stonework in the parambulation project.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And the other?
The second one is a, it's a request for a Rutland legacy, Mr. Robert Scott, Bobby Scott, who will be celebrating his ninetieth birthday on November tenth, and the Sportsman's Club is naming him Sportsman of the Year. And he'll be presented with a presentation with friends and family that day at the Sportsman's Club. And I am asking that the board recognize his ninetieth birthday and declare that day to be Robert Scooter Scott Day in the town of Rutland. And I would like to present that to him at the Sportsman's Club's ninetieth party. Whereas you're all invited also. And Annie Goby, I sent her an email. She would like to be there also. She's going to do a, a presentation also.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah.
Is that a motion to sign?
Ask a motion that you sign, proclamation declaring November tenth, two thousand nineteen, as Robert Scott Day in the town of Rutland.
Second.
It's actually a resolution.
Resolution.
It's fine. Are there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Unanimous. Just a suggestion for the rest of the board, myself included, that we all need to get on the stick, because Jeff's the only one that has been doing such a good job about recognizing some of our residents, so we have competition. All right. Fall special town meeting. You may open, once you have all signed everything you need to sign, your big new white folder.
So everyone at the table will ha, has one of these draft warrants that's loose, and then the binders. Your first tab in your binder is item A. The second tab is item B, and it's in the order of the warrant. That way, you can see all of the backup information that goes along with each of these. After the items are placed, or decided not to go on the warrant, we'll take them out, put them in the correct order, things of that. We'll also do them on a Google Drive. That way, we can have online viewing of the documents as well. And I'm happy to go through each of these as you see fit.
All right, should we dive into it?
Does everybody have a draft warrant? Because I have two down here, so.
I've got an extra twenty right here, in case anyone's
Does anybody want to follow along? Oh. Thank you.
You're welcome. Absolutely.
So I will make a suggestion. We could do motions individually to place. We could also do motions in groupings. So for example, if you look at the first three, those follow along with our financial management policies, where we essentially do the first item of business, taking from free cash that has been certified to place into the three stabilization funds, that being OPEB, regular stabilization in capital. Mike, my only suggestion is we should do OPEB last.
Yep. This was just the warrant from last November that I fixed.
Yeah.
I would say where we're in a little special spot this year with some of the items on the warrant, that whether we do the financial ones first or other ones first, I do think the ones that the Department of Revenue was requiring us to do in order to set the tax rate should be done at the beginning of the meeting. But that's just because that kind of predicates our tax rate. But again, this is just last year's warrant, and then just add it on to it, so I'm happy to change the order. That's why we did item A, item B, item C, so that we can go back and actually number them.
That's fine.
As you guys see fit.
And where are these in your, your tabs here? Are these in order?
The tabs are in order of that document. Yep.
So if you look in your first sheet, you can see goals from financial policies, and you will see that we do not place amounts of money typically on our warrant. We save that for the motions, just in case in the, at the eleventh hour, we have changes, because once you put it on the warrant, you can't make a change. So we have typically included sum of money, and then you'll see the exact sum of money later on in the motions after everything's been reviewed by council.
Council did review all of this language and got back to us during public comment this evening, as to the language of the warrant. So they have, they already have it. It's the earliest they've received it. Normally, the board's seen it at first, but I wanted to get a head start, so I said, this is everything that could be on the warrant. Want you to review it, and then based off the discussion tonight, then we'll triage from there.
Great.
Great.
All these numbers are being double-checked and triple-checked?
Yep. Yep.
The nice thing about doing it this way, when we put sum of money onto the warrant, is that when we go into the meetings with Finance Committee, we can have those triple, quadruple sets of eyes on all the numbers as well.
Yeah, absolutely. So how do we want to do this?
I would love to take a motion for the first three, because they are together. And you don't need to read them out. You can actually just make a motion to place as presented, or you can make a motion to place in a different order, and we'll start numbering them as we go.
Make a motion to place the first three items as written in the draft warrant document. Does that motion suffice?
Yep. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right. Next one. Mike, I, I know you have an explanation for this. So we had an issue with the way one of our items, which we've been, for the past few years, with the availability of a better free cash number, been setting aside proactively about a hundred fifty thousand dollars to offset the next year's budget. It's not an ideal situation, but it's been helpful to us in the state that we've been in relative to funding the school, et cetera. However, when the motion was made back in May, there was a question in, during the review of tape, I think, right? And so we're going to be taking that article again. This is, so this is actually a
Yeah. So this is a correction to that motion at the last meeting, because the words free cash were not used in the motion. In order to use free cash, the state requires us to specifically state free cash.
Yep.
So it didn't list a hundred fifty thousand dollars of free cash, but you'll notice in that section in your binder, I put the handout that was given to it's the next one. It's the, the handout that was given to the people at that town meeting that specifically called out, we were planning on using a hundred fifty thousand dollars of free cash per the town's financial policies to fund the budget. So this is fixing that, so we don't have a hundred fifty thousand dollar deficit.
All right. So this is a slight correction. You can see why. Certified copy of the vote. I would take a motion to place that article on its own.
Which, which article?
Item D.
D.
Just Yeah. There was just, in the backup documentation, there was just a question as to whether or not it was provided to FinCom for the position funded by RDIC.
Yep.
Has that been resolved?
Yes.
It has been resolved?
Yep. That was the amendment that was made on the town meeting floor, where they added five hundred fifty dollars to the RDIC's account.
Okay.
Yep. That's just the official record of the minutes.
Got it. So then make the motion to place article B on the warrant as written, as placed?
Do I have a second? Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. All right. Next one, town charter.
This was what we had presented to the board in the spring, when we met, and the board said this is something we should wait to move on till later. It was re-proposed by the person who proposed it in the spring. I called the Collins Center, and they said that amount is still accurate. So it's to hire the, uh, hire a consultant to assist the town in drafting a town charter.
We have to bid that out?
No, exactly. We don't.
We don't?
Yep, because Collins is on the state contract.
Oh, okay, on the state list.
Yep.
I mean
So editorial note, I would typically put the sort of selective expenditure items later and do the things we absolutely have to spend money on first. However, charter's important, but, you know, the order overall. Most people who are there for specials stay for the entirety of special, although at forty-eight articles, this one's going to be pretty lengthy.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
And you tell me if it's possible, because we talked about splitting this up over the potential of a couple of evenings to kind of make it more palatable for both us and the public. Would it be possible, then, to run through the items, vote whether or not to place them, and then meet to arrange the order, or
Yes.
Would that be productive, do you think?
Yep.
Can we make a comment as we're going through them that we might want to place it later? You know, just vote to place with the comment that, look at, will we do the order, consider moving up or down?
Can we just make a, a blanket motion now that we vote to place the items tonight, and then the next meeting, we will vote to arrange them in the order that we feel is appropriate?
Yeah, I don't even think that's required. We're voting to place them. What we'll come back to then at the next meeting is an edited version with just the placed articles, and then we'll shuffle.
We can move them around.
Yeah, absolutely.
We may be posting that special meeting for Monday, then, just if we need to, because Thursday's is only from seven fifty, uh, seven forty-five to eight.
Yeah.
So I'm going to guess we're going to need that meeting on Monday, but
I mean, technically, we're posted throughout the eight o'clock meeting. We could continue to be placing things as the discussion moves forward. It's a little unwieldy, but we could.
Yeah, I think Finance Committee might be voting on their recommendations during that meeting as well. So, but they, that, they could change that, too. That's just based on the discussion that they had at the last meeting.
Okay.
All right.
All right. So we're back to simply placing it.
Yep.
Don't worry about the order, and we're talking about the charter.
So we have a motion for item D to place?
Great.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Did everybody take a quick look at your free cash totals at the top? And Mike, that's, how, how final are we with numbers?
We'll have a final, final number next, mid next week to early next week. Those projections are still based off what we had last week. Looks like they're going to be changing for the better. But I don't want to overstate and then have it come in later until the state finals finishes the review.
Okay.
Set expectations low and then
Exactly.
Exactly.
So our current number for, for free cash?
We're going off of eight hundred thousand for these numbers.
Thank you. All right. We're moving on to page two.
With a positive outlook, I should say.
Thank you. We're moving on to page two. We've got a couple here that probably could be placed together, if you'd like. Select Board Secretary wages, Police Chief wages. Mike, you want to give us a quick on those?
Sure. We, when the former Select Board Secretary was promoted to the full-time executive assistant position, we started to professionalize it. But she hasn't been able to come to the night meetings. We, when the Planning Board Secretary position became vacant, and the Finance Committee Secretary position became vacant, we noticed from advertising the two that they weren't really getting much bite because the hours were so lis, low. It was, the one had like eight hours a month, potentially. The other one had a smaller range, like eight to twelve hours a month. So we're combining them all together to make it more palatable for someone who's looking for just more bang for their buck, but also adding these extras gives it more regularity, so there's some consistency there. That way, it's not, oh, I'm coming to one meeting in July and then seven meetings in November. And while that'll still fluctuate, at least there's some consistency with the weekly process. So this is looking to add the Select Board Secretary position to that Recording Secretary position that we created, to get someone here to take the minutes at night. That way, we don't have to have the recorder out each day. We can have someone present to do it.
What if you don't have a applicant?
We've already got four.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I think that's a good idea. And you'll get uniformity with the minutes and everything else, too, so it'll be
Yeah.
Uniform across the board.
Yeah.
No problem.
And then Police Chief wages?
When we were going through negotiating the Police Chief's contract, we went through his current contract, which is in your next section, and noticed, he and I both noticed that we both skipped a part when we were doing the budget for this year. His contract says he'll receive a base salary plus any cost of living adjustment that the non-union employees receive. Now, two years ago, a COLA wasn't given. Last year, the COLA wasn't added in until Margaret Cutter's salary on the town meeting floor, so he didn't plan for a COLA to be given. So he forgot that that provision was in his contract, and so this is just
Two percent.
Two percent.
Is this retro?
Uh, yes, it's retro. Nineteen hundred dollar, nineteen twenty.
So it's something we owe him contractually anyhow?
Exactly. So this is just making it right.
Yep.
Nineteen twenty is not retro. It's inclusive of all of FY?
Inclusive of all of FY twenty.
Twenty, thank you.
Yeah, that's not the amount we owe him going back. That's everything we owe him for the current fiscal year.
Almost we owe him going back, and how can I remedy that?
It's, it's a portion of this nineteen twenty.
It's just from July one.
Yeah. So we changed his payroll certification to increase his hourly rate to account that nineteen twenty back into it.
Okay.
But we need the money in the account before we do that.
Got it.
So this amount will make him whole for FY twenty.
Correct.
Perfect.
And he was already whole for previous Fys, I think is what Jeff is asking.
Not last year, but where that fiscal year's closed out. I don't know how we would go back and do that. I think we could just have to make it right now and
We would have to go to the legislature.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's
We'd have to do a home row petition, like we're doing with the Deputy Chief.
All right. So going, we motion to place, make a motion to place item F and G, relate to the wages of, uh, part-time secretary, board wages, and the cost of living adjustment for the chief.
Second.
Discussion.
Chief of Police.
Thank you. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. All right. We have a temporary employee.
My, so as part of my role as town administrator, I'm the town My, so as part of my role as town administrator, I'm the town's HR director as well. Um, we have an employ- I'm putting this through, through my department just to keep the employees confidential. Um, but we have an employee going out on maternity leave, um, beginning in February and the employee has enough accrued time to be paid under FMLA, uh, for her twelve-week maternity leave. So I, the department that this person works for is looking to hire a temp for that twelve-week time, that way the functions of that department, particularly where that's town meeting season, um, continue to function smoothly. I contracted, I contacted the vendor on the state contract, um, who does temp agencies, asked for their rate. There is only one vendor on the state contract for temp agencies. Um, they informed me that they were gonna charge twenty-two dollars and change an hour for the town to use that position. Um, of that twenty-two sixty-something, I think it's twenty-two sixty-four, the person in the seat who's actually doing the job will be making a wages of sixteen dollars and twenty-something cents an hour. The remaining that is health insurance, fringe benefits, uh, fees and stuff like that. Um, so the eighty-two hundred dollars that's being requested is for going through the state contracted temp agency. We can hire someone in-house to fill that twelve-week. However, we haven't had luck doing that in the past, trying to find someone who'll go during the workday to do it. So I budgeted for the higher amount, which is through the state contract.
What are you gonna get with a temp?
What's that?
W- wow.
Thirty hours a week, like the current positions funded.
What is the hourly rate compared to what we're paying now for the individual?
The per individual currently makes eighteen forty-three.
So we're paying the temp more money than we're paying the individual?
No.
Well, we're paying the temp agency more.
And the temp is making less, I'm not-
Well, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
The temp agency is getting a twenty-two four something, but the person who's actually doing the work will be getting sixteen forty-seven an hour.
That number does not include fringe. You just said for the person that's currently employed that's going out.
Correct, that doesn't include fringe benefits, no.
A couple things. I think, um, the language on this will need to be more specific because it's very broad right now. And I get why it's broad, but to a point, but we, we do know that it's clerical. Um, it's not for DPW. People are gonna be asking those questions. And then I have to be honest, the idea of spending money just on essentially middleman agency fees when we could at least attempt to post it?
By the time you post it though and fill it, it's gonna be, you know?
The other thing is if we don't, if we don't get that higher amount, um, and we do post it and we don't get any luck and we have to go to the temp agency, then we're restricted and we have to take a week off.
Well, I mean, what are you gonna get from a temp? What do you- could, is there an option to offer overtime to some of the other clerical and the other, other departments? Cause some of the-
The money would still need to be appropriated somewhere, but I see what you mean.
Yeah.
Is this even, the question is, it's, you know, it's, maternity leave is twelve weeks that this individual is going, I mean, is this even necessary to spend almost ten thousand dollars on somebody for the twelve-week period? Can we handle these obligations internally without having to do that?
I would say no, based off of past practice.
I think, I think in a typical situation that we, we had enough, this particular situation, knowing how things went, you know, several months ago, I don't, I don't know that it's possible this time.
Yeah.
If it wa- it, that would be dependent on the department. There are certain departments where I could see that happening. This particular department, I could see that being the issue.
So, I guess, the temp agency, that's the state vendor, if we need someone immediately, is the quickest, easiest one-shot way to go.
Someone who's vetted? I mean, they giving us somebody who's trained in, in this area?
Yep.
Yeah, and if they're not, we send them back and get another one.
Right.
And I think that dollar amount is kind of the worst-case scenario that we have to go through the temp agency for the entire time versus maybe we try to fill in with overtime here and there or whatever with current in-house.
Well, that would end up costing more money.
Right.
And we'd have to have a contract, I'm assuming, with the temp agency that it would have to be as described. So that's the issue there, but I understand the concern.
But I think that what I'm saying is that the dollar amount that, the eighty-two hundred is kind of the max dollar amount and ideally we would try to find, fill it in-house for less than that, but we are within a time strain, constraint that we need to.
What might be helpful, Mike, while some of these details get ironed out, would be to change the language of the article to be something more along the lines of not hiring a temporary employee, but placing it within your budget for, um, wages.
Okay.
And, and it'll just essentially add wages, right, to your support staff line item?
Yeah.
That'll give you the flexibility to do what you need to do. Does that mean moving people around in-house? Does that mean hiring a temp, but maybe it's not for the office that we're talking about? You know what I mean? I think it'll give you more flexibility than the way it's phrased right now.
I also wonder if that Recording Secretary position would be open to taking those, that twelve weeks on, knowing that it's-
The issue we'd run into there is the Recording Secretary is-
Thirty, thirty hours a week.
Is, uh, is budgeted to a certain amount that if we did that, then we'd have to pay them health insurance.
We'll start paying, yeah.
You can't provide people health insurance.
Yeah, whatever you do.
I know, that's the issue.
Actually, that would've been a good question for Becky to see what she's got, some buffer.
So we, we kick this one back for some tweaking?
Sure.
I mean, I think that we know that something needs to happen.
Yep.
And I, it sounds like for the most part, the board's in agreement with something needs to happen, but that it needs to be reworked a little bit.
I would, I would still love to explore some options to give our other clerical staff the option to put a couple hours in overtime. Just give us some options.
Well, are people comfortable placing it as simply an additional, uh, amount of money to the existing line item?
Pending review of the new language?
Yeah.
Can we do that? I mean, yeah, I don't see that being an issue.
And would it be like a maximum of that eighty-two hundred or would you leave the dollar amount out for right now?
I mean, if that's what we need, that's what we need.
Yeah, I would stick with the maximum eighty-two hundred.
Right.
Cause that's if we have to go with the temp agency.
Right, it's not going to exceed that, right, for the twelve?
I would hope not.
Yeah.
I think we have to set our own goal internally that it simply can't exceed that.
It simply cannot exceed.
Right, but that's if we had to go through the temp agency for the entire twelve weeks, it's eighty-two hundred.
Yeah.
So motion to place, uh, item H contingent upon reviewing, uh, reworked language.
Great.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye. Greg?
Alright, feasibility design, Community Hall.
Uh, we just talked about this one and if you flip to that section in your binder, you'll see the designs. The, um, dollar amount again goes towards the conversion of the drawings to construction documents, the bidding of the project and the construction oversight. Um, again, uh, if we, if the board votes to approve the drawings, um, articles don't expire and this would be a separate contract with the architect also, um, so this isn't something we have to do right away for the bidding of the project and so on from there. But if we'd like to keep the project moving, which I would like to do because of the changes that are currently happening with the reorgs of the Public Safety Building, um, due to the increased staffing on the fire department side, um, and Dispatch's financial hits with losing that grant since they're at capacity, um, I'd like to make it a priority.
So my question, if I can, through the chairs, if we wanna move forward with the construction and the oversight, we don't have fixed costs as to what that's gonna cost yet and we don't know what that is. I guess I'm a little skeptical in moving forward at this point right now without knowing what the cost of the renovations are gonna be? Because I mean, it just, I can imagine a scenario where, you know, let's say we recommend to the public, we wanna spend sixty thousand dollars almost on a feasibility study for this building and it comes back that it's gonna be two million dollars cheaper for an alternative route. We just spent sixty thousand dollars on something that wasn't fully-
Didn't we already spend all this money on some sort of a
Yeah, they got the drawings.
Architecture, the Dallas drawings, how much did that cost?
Uh,
There were previous drawings that showed the building connecting to the town hall annex and making that whole section into one building. Um, they were able to use some of that to get the cost of the drawings that you have before you down substantially, um, from a hundred thousand to fifteen thousand. So they were used before. Um, as per the cost of the whole project, the architect said I'll have that by next week. So if that's something you would like to hold?
I just think, I mean, we, we, it's not just the cost of this project, it's, you know, maybe we could talk about other alternatives. The cost of the project, you're gonna have to put in all sorts of buffers for state issues and I think it would be prudent for us if we perhaps explored some of that as a board publicly and then maybe held this until the spring and make sure that going in, we have everything to present to the public, like this is what this is going to cost. This is what alternative plans could look like. What is the public's thought on it?
Cause fifty-eight thousand commits us now. As before, we were still kind of like, hey, feasibility, let's find out if this is something that
Yeah.
we wanna do.
I mean, I guess my question is, what's the, part of the impetus for this is because rec needs to expand for their, the grants and bringing in
Mm-hmm.
other towns and everything. So what's the timeline for rec to?
So-
Like, public safety needs to expand from the fire department side and rep potentially police also.
The current plan with the third firefighter is, um, Director Moriarty's office is actually moving to the Police Department break room. And that break room is going to be his office and the police will be using the fire department break room as their break room as well. And Director Moriarty's office is becoming, going to become the third bunk room for that. Uh, we are at complete capacity with, um, the dispatch center itself. State nine-one-one provided detailed plans on how they would reorganize and renovate the annex. And they said that the development grant would cover the entirety of it. They won't cover any new construction. They won't cover a portion of new construction. And it has to be something that meets their very specific guidelines, which is the only one they've met so far in the town is the annex.
Yeah, I think to lay this question into what we just heard, I would feel more comfortable if we had a comprehensive plan for all of these buildings and who's going where, what's doing what. And then the funding amounts that we need to get these projects done before we spend money on a study that if we don't go forward with this, we just spent what is essentially a policeman's salary on something, you know?
Yep.
And I understand that. My question was, what's the timeline on?
For study.
If, if we hold this until spring, then does that offset, do, do we lose the state nine-one-one grant options for the annex and does it snow, you know what I mean, does it snowball?
This isn't really related to those projects though, is it? This is just for the community building.
Well, that would make it so that the offices that are currently in the annex could move there and rec could move there.
But I mean, this wouldn't impact the timeline because it's not, this isn't the build-out, this is just-
They, the dollar amount for rec won't be impacted for the constr- the renovation of the building.
Right.
We're gonna lose that hundred thousand dollars of development funding anyway, since we're at capacity for the next year and there's no way for us to be able to meet that.
Right.
Now, anyway.
Unless we move the annex out to trailers.
Let's just, I mean, realistically, us as a board then, I think we have our marching orders in terms of having to come up with something cohesive and maybe we can have a few meetings or space dedicated to talking about the overall strategy for these things specifically and what we wanna do with it before we spend money on feasibility studies and that's just-
Yeah.
I don't want this to die just yet. I think we clearly are not ready to place it tonight, so let's, we're gonna set this aside, see what everybody says on Thursday. They might have some very strong ideas, um.
Uh, the other, as part of the co-group?
Yep, yep, and we'll see where they, where they stand, so, um, don't look at your drawings anymore. We're gonna move on.
Smaller numbers here.
Uh, yep, alright, so you've got, uh, seventy-eight ninety-seven for a plotter printer scanner, um, you've got annex, annex supplies.
The first one is for the annex and then a couple ones down from now, you'll see one for the DPW. It's a scan planner. Um, we seem to be up to our eyeballs at the annex and scans, depending on where you go and a lot of them have been moved to the third floor of the Community Hall building. So we'd like to get those just scanned, that way we have them electronically to free up some space. It also allows us to be moving forward, print, maps, drawings, things of that. Um, for both the annex for the first one and the DPW for the later one, you'll see that. Especially one for the DPW where we have all our water sewer work coming up. Um, that would be really helpful for Joe. And with all the work that Dave has going with all the site plan review, the same with the building apartment and stuff like that, it'd be helpful to have some type of printer there to do that. We currently have one existing at the Public Safety Building, uh, so anytime we want something printed on anything bigger than eleven by seventeen, we have to email it to the Fire Chief to print over there and just not really effec- efficient.
Mike, what was the logic of splitting those instead of just combining them into a full, some, two plotter printers?
I always, I got it from two separate department requests, so I just put the requests as they came in.
If people are okay with combining those, they're considering, assuming it's the exact same model or make, okay.
I guess my only question would be if, if the townspeople think one-
Only one, approve one, that's true.
You know?
Yeah, so I could see the town planner, whether they want or not, they can go up there and get it.
I mean, I think two is definitely, it sounds like two is definitely warranted and needed, but I would hate it to be two or nothing and it be a nothing vote when a one may pass.
The way it is to, to kind of lay this point is it's more transparent as to where it's going and people feel more comfortable with it knowing that it's going here and knowing it's going here. So I think it's, it's more likely to, to look positive if they're separated, but-
So maybe add language, Mike, for the departments that you just gave us into the motions, so then they'll know which departments they're going to.
Okay.
Um, if people are comfortable, we could maybe place those three then?
Mm-hmm, that's through L, right?
Yeah.
Through L.
If you notice two, L does say, never mind.
Nope, not yet.
It says in the motion.
Yeah.
Motion to, uh, place items J, K, and L, second.
Discussion.
I have one question for K. I haven't looked at the-
Yeah, we skipped talking about K.
What's the K, it's the twenty-five hundred dollar-
Supplies.
Annex supplies.
So, because of the amount of new staff that we have looking over certain accounts, there was a mistake made in paying the first couple bills for different items in the annex. Um, a vacuum cleaner, um, an is- issue that a carpet needed to be cleaned and the cleaning supplies for that. Um, some, uh, stuff for the kiosk and some other devices that, uh, it was all, where these items benefited everyone who's in the annex as a whole, those bills were paid out of annex supplies. And then Joe came up to my office, was like, how come you guys spent twenty-five hundred dollars out of the fuel account? We didn't realize that the supply line item for the Community Hall and the Community Hall annex are the fuel accounts. Um, none of that money dealt with the recent renovations and reorg at all. That was all last year's money. This is all just bills that we paid that, it benefits everyone in the annex. There's paper in there too.
We're gonna buy the supplies anyway.
Yeah.
Okay, so I mean, it's just kind of shifting the money around.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I don't have a prob- I just, we hadn't talked about it, so.
True enough.
Fair enough, yeah. We'll also be, um, fixing the names of those line items so that we know that supplies actually means fuel and not actually supplies, so.
That is gonna be another suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a motion with a second to prove those three?
We do.
Thank you.
Uh, discussion? Any more discussion? Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, great. Alright, now we're heading on to the next big one, which is, this is my place, Senior Center.
Feasibility design.
This is to do the, um, the drawings like you have for the Town Hall building in your previous section for a new senior center. It's not construction drawings, it's not the high stuff. It's just the same drawings that you have for the Community Hall building for a new senior center and what that would be.
So to Mitch's point about, you know, sort of master planning and what our sort of schedule is, um, and obviously Becky couldn't stay tonight, but between, i- if you talk to Becky and you talk to our town accountant, we are finally at the point of seeing an enormous amount of debt come off of our rolls and we actually are in a position now to start considering some of the projects that we've been putting off for about fifteen years because of our debt load. The Senior Center, you know, which everybody has sort of batted around for years as, we really should do this. They obviously don't have a building that is in any way, shape or form suitable for them. Um, but it also is a project that is manageable in size, uh, in, in scope, particularly because we've got two neighboring communities, Sterling and West Boylston, that have recently built new ones, um, have offered to share their experiences as well as even their plans. So, um, and we know, I think, Mike, you had a conversation with the director who definitely still wants to do some due diligence relative to location and all that. But having the money available to us in this round of free cash for this fall town meeting and getting that set aside will put us in the right path of a project that unlike the Community Hall and the location of a brand-new town hall might take years. Um, this is a project that I think everybody is sort of behind, at least in, in theory. Uh, we don't have to rush forward with this feasibility design, but at least having the money set aside will allow us to know that we can go and take it to that next step once we-
My question about this in particular is if we have all of the details worked out in terms of location, you know, that kind of thing, is this gonna encompass like very- My question about this in particular is if we have all of the details worked out in terms of location, you know, that kind of thing, is this gonna encompass like various locations that this could be placed? Or is this something where we have a fixed location that we're looking for a design study for?
So this would be something, we probably wouldn't use it right away. The board seated that senior center committee earlier this year. This, in my opinion, is something that where we have the money now, we set it aside for when we need it so that that committee can determine.
Okay.
These are some options we could have. This is where we'd like to go and stuff like that. That way, when they're ready, then we can contact the architect and be like.
That's also good to hear too, because in the seniors center projects that I've worked on and building new ones, this was funded by the state through grant funding and through collaborative efforts. So I would like to see us exhaust every effort to get this paid for by somebody else before we spend the money to do it, because I know that we can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah. To table both.
Well, I think we could put it, we can place it just to get the money, like Sheila indicated, to have it there because this is something the public is behind. And they're getting a chance to vote on it anyway, but in the case where we can't, we've exhausted all the options and where that new group is meeting and talking about these things, we can then employ this funding down the road when we're ready to.
And if we get state grant funding to do it, then we just vote to release the funds to something else. It's just kinda setting it aside.
It's kinda like earmarking it, so it's there if we need it.
It'll be an interesting conversation because right now the only state proj, the only projects that the state is funding are cooperative projects that aren't just senior centers, that community centers. I don't know that that's exactly what our population wants right now, so it'll be kind of interesting to see where that heads.
So we can hear that feedback too, I mean, yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, will the people decide, place it?
Yep, so can I get a motion?
Motion to place item M for the senior center study. Wow, that's a senior centers, senior center study, um, as written.
Sure.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, stump grinder, highway construction maintenance supplies can go together. Do you have anything to add to that, Mike? We know the stump grinder's too small.
Stump grinder is from Joe, you see the quote from John Dear, and the thirteen thousand dollars and change for item O, uh, highway construction maintenance. That's the money that was spent to cover the emergency repairs that were made to the driveway by Central Tree Middle School.
Can, in the motion, can it, I don't know if it can say why that it was for the Central Tree Middle School.
The driveway repair?
Right. I don't know if.
It wouldn't be, yeah, it wouldn't be in the motion, but we can have that as an information.
Yep.
Okay, just, I just, I mean, I was, I would be curious and I'm sure there's a lot of other townspeople that would be curious as to.
No, it's a good question. So in, in previous days, the project itself would probably have waited to see if Fall Town Meeting, um, would have separately funded it. So we have a large repair to do. We didn't have enough money in our budget to fund this. Can we fund it now under a special article? Um, Joe's take on it was that he felt that it was an emergency, um, or at least emergent enough considering the school was about to start, that he took it upon himself to use highway construction maintenance supplies. That's appropriate. However, we fund that line item so, um, leanly, that we need to replace the money and that's, that can be the explanation on the floor.
Yeah, and that's fine.
Let's place them.
But thank you.
So we're on N and O.
Make a motion, we place uh, item N for the stump grinder, item O, uh, thirteen thousand, oh, sixty-eight fifty-two, uh, from free cash.
Can I, do we need a second before we discuss or, I second the motion?
Okay.
Um, just to add, I guess, clarity for the public, I know that the stump grinder is something that was brought up earlier in open discussion. But a lot of people don't know that, um, stumps are like a, a huge issue with DEP at the state level and there are certain procedures that we have to follow to dispose of them, to get rid of them. Um, so it's something that I think in the long run could end up saving the town money. I know the concern was that it's too small. Um, but I think, uh, if the director thinks this is the appropriate one, I think it's definitely, definitely a good step in the right direction.
I, I'm wondering if he likes this one as an internal piece of equipment to have and that maybe he'll look to CMR PC to do a shared piece of equipment, um, like we do.
Like the regional, yeah.
Yeah.
Because I mean, uh, people will see stump grinder and say, what do you stump grinder for? But I mean, it is with the Department of Environmental Protection, a big deal, so.
Well, and you, when you think about him coming from a water sewer background, he knows what this entails in terms of caring for those lines and so, yeah.
Place it.
I know, you want him to get a bigger one. Maybe we can get a bigger one to share.
This is what he asked for.
Alright, I have, I have a motion and a second.
Too late.
Any discussion further, uh, hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, great. Okay, community center, all by itself.
Four chairs and, uh, four tables and sixteen chairs to replace ones they currently have there. They're all folding chairs and folding tables and there's a concern that if someone uses the table to stabilize themselves as they're standing up or sitting down, that it'll fold under them and uh, someone will get hurt and that'll be on the town's liability.
And we have, I think, two of the most vulnerable populations in the town using that facility in youth and the elderly, so, um, I think it's certainly any equipment that we can provide to better that situation is, is a worthwhile place. So I'll make a motion to place item P, um, as, as written.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, alright, we've got, um, five thousand free cash for bylaw legal review.
The ad hoc bylaw committee is looking to have rolling legal review of the bylaws that they're reviewing, rather than submitting a finalized book to town council for them to review and could be kind of rushed because then you're submitting everything at once. They're looking to have a rolling, um, to make sure everything's kosher as they're going. That's what this five thousand dollars is for.
Fair enough. I mean, does it, would this have to be reviewed, whatever product they produce by the state anyhow?
Yes, but if it's reviewed by the state, then it's thrown out and we have to re-vote. So this is to try to avoid having the state throw out what we vote upon.
How much is on our legal line item total for the year, twenty-five?
Thirty.
Thirty. So the other option we have is not placing it using town legal fees and then doing a reserve fund transfer at the end of the year if we run out.
How close are we to running out of legal fees?
Right now, not close to.
So we have plenty of money?
Uh, right now, yes.
Yeah, I mean, is there any reason to not allow that committee to use existing?
They just didn't wanna exhaust what we currently have.
Yeah, but.
Like you, like the chair indicated, we can always kinda make that transfer.
Yeah.
We're not gonna run out before May.
No.
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 If it runs out then you.
We'll get close by June, but.
I would rather not. I mean, but, I mean, we can let the town vote on it, but I just don't see the need for it.
Well, I don't think it's required. I think it's legal expense that's appropriately expended. Why we would have to, it's not a.
Separated.
Separate, yeah.
Yeah, and I just, I guess I don't want it to come across as by not placing it, we don't support what they're doing, that we support what they're doing, we just think that it can be rolled under in the current.
Absolutely.
They can use the equal in the meantime, to the rest of us.
And if we need to adjust at, in the spring, we'll adjust in the spring, knowing full well that they may have a five thousand dollar
Yep.
Amount roughly that we maybe didn't anticipate when we set the budget in May.
Yeah.
It won't just be them. If, if the amount of thirty thousand dollars is expended, it'll be because of multiple things that required multiple legal reviews, so.
Right.
Um, so could I get a motion to not place with the explanation for the record?
A motion to not place item Q with the explanation for the record and that we wholeheartedly support the work of the ad hoc bylaw committee.
Support and appreciate.
And appreciate it.
Yeah.
And that, and that they have full, um, they can fully avail themselves of the existing legal fund, which at this point is plenty of money.
So they'll be receiving the same benefit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just in different means.
Yep.
Second.
Thank you. Any more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, onward, fifteen thousand dollars for.
For closed parcels.
This is the same one Becky placed last year. It costs a thousand dollars per parcel to put into land court, so this is to get fifteen parcels forward.
No, at the risk of sounding, uh, like we're not being consistent, I actually appreciate having this one on here because these are single projects for her. She doesn't always go to land court, so when she comes in and says, this is how much I need to go with, you know, my list of parcels, then that's what we do for her.
Yep. And she, she briefed us anyways recently, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
Let's place it.
Motion to place item R, as written.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, item S, Maine to Maple. It's actually not the entire, actually, is it the entire road?
No.
It's not. It's actually not Maine to Maple. It's Maine to whatever the name of the Heights Road is.
It's not named.
It's not unnamed roadway, road.
Is that this?
Yes.
This has been a point of discussion for many years, ever since we acquired the Heights. Um, they did so much work that the state paid for to that roadway, um, which does meet the requirements of chapter ninety. And now we have a situation where the roadway, which is heavily in use that connects the, it's essentially the driveway to the two schools. But now that it's a throughway, because it does have access, open access to Maple Avenue, um, it's in like sort of a dire need of repair. There's this significant drainage issues. And not being an accepted road, we cannot use chapter ninety.
Why, I care, in part of our backup, you recommend this not be placed at this time. What was the recommendation concerning?
The department heads would be, who would be involved in the review, Joe and Dave, um, just think there's some more steps that need to be taken before it's ready for town meeting. Planning board has forty-five days from when the select board sends it to the planning board. That we wouldn't have forty-five days before town meeting, so on from there. So well, this isn't a no. This is something we all think should be done because half of it's already there.
Needs more due diligence.
It just needs more due diligence before we do it. So we're looking to move it before.
Hold to May?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright.
Not ready for primetime.
Not ready for primetime. Nine hu, I know, the money that's sitting in the closet at the state house. Right, yes, we, yeah, so there's nine.
What is that?
Nine hundred thousand.
Nine hundred thousand, twenty-fourteen bundle. Yeah. But we need to show that we're sh, we're shovel-ready. So maybe by May, we'll be closer.
And isn't there a certain percentage also that the town needs, not just, is it shovel-ready or does the town also need to have a cer, certain percentage that they'll, they're putting in also?
Yeah, the town needs to show that it's gonna do its due diligence and its work.
So do we need a motion to?
No, we'll hold this. We'll just hold this one, so, yep.
Mike, can you just make a note to add that to this spring? Yeah, so that, I don't know if you have a file for spring yet, but if you can put it in there just so it doesn't get lost in the shovel.
Yep, no, we do.
Thank you.
And the school department was fully in favor of this as well, as was their facilities subcommittee.
In favor of waiting or in favor of?
No, in favor of us taking over that.
Sure they are.
When was the town meeting, the special town meeting?
When is this?
November fourteenth at six PM at Glenwood.
November fourteenth?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Our fire chief just walked, walked in. Um, we have a few articles relating to fire department. Maybe could we skip to those and let the man?
We're moving, we're moving pretty fast.
We're almost there. He can wait to, we've, we've still got thirty minutes until kickoff. We're like, cranking.
Yeah.
Uh, okay.
Right, I tried Seth.
Vision appraisal software, item T.
Do we need a motion not to place?
But.
We're gonna hold it.
In fact, the only reason I asked for a motion specifically for that one be, was because of the discussion and the fact that there's funding elsewhere, yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
Item T.
You remember, we did a interdepartmental transfer at the end of the fiscal year to get a new server because the, uh, new assessor's software wouldn't run on our old server. This is that software that wouldn't run on our old server.
Software?
Yep, this is the software.
Fifteen thousand?
That, um, controls our property appraisals that then controls how much we can send out in property tax bills.
Yeah, this, I, this is important.
Yep.
To put it bluntly, I mean, it's, it's an important expense.
Yep. Motion?
So a motion to place item T is written.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, um, oh my gosh.
Yeah, this is an update. This was eight hundred dollars and I'd like to explain how this jumped from eight hundred dollars to twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, thanks.
The, Joe called me to say that the computers down at the DPW were not running on Windows ten, were running on Windows seven.
Yeah, it's a huge problem.
Um, and that made it so that they are not able to use that new GIS software that we had going. So that caused me to review it further and I found out that anything earlier than Windows ten is not going to be supported anymore come June.
Yep.
So when I called Paul McKenzie and was like, how much is it gonna cost to upgrade the systems? Um, he said, well, I have to see how many, what, what it's gonna cost, is his computer gonna need upgrading and stuff like that. But it's two hundred dollars per upgrade license. So that's where the original eight hundred dollars came from. Then he told me that there's a three hundred dollar setup fee that CM Geeks charges. And any machine older than four years, we're gonna have to replace the machine pretty soon. So it's a thousand to twelve hundred dollars for a new machine that has a new operating system. Or five hundred dollars to just upgrade the machine when you do the upgrade software and the service time.
Yeah.
So then I said, okay, well, how many computers do we have townwide that this is going to affect? Because Joe only found out about it because his software wasn't working on it. I'm sure we've got other ones. So we have twenty computers that are no longer gonna be served on their current operating system come June fourteenth. So this is the amount to cover all of those computers so that we remain electronically efficient in the next fiscal year.
And to come on, to, to kinda piggyback off that, a lot of the state offices are going through this right now too, where the, the big concern is that with Windows seven no longer being supported, that that opens you up to viruses, hackers.
Yeah.
Things like that, so.
Ransomware.
Yeah.
Everybody is.
Do for that.
Yeah.
The updates that will discontinue on July four, June fourteenth, one of them is any and all security upgrades to the system and the system starts to deteriorate after that. So that's the main concern there, especially with how many municipalities have been attacked recently and where it got to the point where Lermanster had to pay the ransom.
One of the, I think it was Cape Cod Community College was just, um, somebody hacked it and took out a million dollars in funding, uh, in ten minutes. So, I mean, I think it's, everyone's peeling off the Band-Aid at the same time. The state offices are going through it. It's just something I think that we have to move forward on.
What did CIPC say?
This, I just got this number today.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't. CIPC.
Hasn't seen it.
We haven't seen it.
Yeah.
That's gonna be the issue, it will not have gone through the process.
Can we hold until CIPC?
Sees it?
Sees it?
We can talk about it at our meeting this week.
Right, like approve pending CIPC.
But it hasn't gone through the scoring or anything.
Right.
I, I don't know that, well.
I mean, I would consider this though, an emergency capital expense.
Yeah.
I was gonna say.
We gonna be doing this again in another year or two?
No, so this should get us, but what I would like to do.
For all the other computers in.
That we didn't know, because we've actually been keeping up with those computers and you'll see most of them are on Windows ten.
I had a couple questions about the server two thousand eight and server two, twenty-sixteen. Are they?
We just spent that at the.
That's gonna, that's gonna be okay?
That's, that's part of the one that we just spent the money through the interdepartmental.
Okay, but they're gonna be okay.
Um, but that'll be okay, yeah. My goal with this one is to do something similar that we don't currently have, but that we currently do for our vehicle fleet. Where we have a rotation process for those to set something up like that with our computers, so we aren't buying twenty computers at once again.
It's very proactive.
Um, and it's something we should have.
Yeah.
There you go.
Um, because this is a massive, I, I called Paul probably four or five times where I just hung up the phone and then was like, no, I heard that wrong and just recalled him. I was like, I gotta talk about, I, this doesn't make sense. Um, but the CM Geeks has been with us for a year, um, so they don't know the full history behind it, but they say the notes that they have from our previous IT consultant just say that it wasn't included in a budget to keep replacing, so that's why we have.
I, if I may, I have another question. What's gonna be the timeline? Because I know like, the Chromebooks are still like in neverland.
Can we do it before the June fourteenth?
Right. That, no, but seriously, that's.
That's really the heart of your question.
That's the goal. Well, that's another reason why I'd like to request the money now rather than come May, because we'll never, if we do it in May, we'll never get the money in time.
Right.
Money or computers?
Well, no, technically you would do it at the May special and the money would be immediately available. You wouldn't do it at the annual.
Yeah, but I'm saying between May and June fourteenth, we wouldn't have enough time to set up twenty computers.
Yeah, I think.
It's really just, it's really just a process question with CIPC. This is really a capital. I totally see what you're saying. I think we need to send an explanatory letter, essentially to say what you just said, to CIPC and say, we apologize.
Yeah, no, CIPC.
This is unforeseen, I mean.
Said, said this would be their, the capital expense way of doing it. They do have an operating expense way of doing it and that's where we lease the computers from CM Geeks. I don't think that's a good idea though.
No.
I think we can work with our other board to make sure that this goes forward the way it needs to. I think it's a, it's a security priority.
I think it's in the best interest of the town. I mean, and.
And that's why we're gonna be tracking it going forward because this is something that could have put the town at risk that once we start tracking and have an idea that this is the least coming down the pike we can plan for, so we're not put at this risk again in the future. That once we start tracking and have an idea that this is the least coming down the pike, we can plan for, so we're not put at this risk again in the future.
My only other question is, CIPC meets on Thursday. Would you guys be able to score and make a recommendation on this on Thursday?
I can request it from the Chair to add it as part of our agenda.
I mean, would that be, that would at least get a little bit into the process? Like, we can either hold it, or we can agree to place it pending CIPC's recommendation?
Oh, we could do, I mean, we could do that, too. I mean.
I mean, I feel like no matter what CIPC says, we kind of, it's that emergency piece that it's really tough, like.
Well, the numbers just came in today, so.
Yeah, I don't, again, I.
Yeah, the, the process goal is to get CIPC's recommendation. There is, within the policy, there are exceptions for emergencies. You know, somebody could make an argument that it could wait for another special, but, um.
Not with the virus and stuff that you said.
I think what we can do is, we can speak to them Thursday, and I don't anticipate there being any issue with it. I mean, that's just me speaking as a private person, but.
Right. I mean, so do we hold it? Would, do you think that that's the?
No, I think we have, we have to place it.
Okay.
Yeah. So, uh, motion to place item U as written.
Second. Oh, go ahead. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think, Mike, they're gonna want as specific as possible.
Yeah.
You know, I know twenty-five is a rounded number. It's fair enough, but, and like, this is a great start. Okay.
Kickoff in nine.
Item V, the language in your articles is gonna have to be amended. I mistook what Joe was saying by this. He's requesting funding, twenty-five hundred dollars to replace the roof. He said at the pump house. I thought that meant the water pump houses that we have. This is actually, the pool house needs a new roof. So the words water department will be removed before the words pump house in the second to last line. But this is.
Only twenty-five hundred dollars?
It's cheap.
It's just a repair.
Just don't hire the same people that did the other two roofs that are leaking.
Yeah.
It says we need to replace it. That's what the.
But it's just the shed at the pool house.
Yeah, it's a small roof. It shouldn't be more.
It's not the whole. It's not the pool house. It's the shed where the mechanicals are.
The pump house.
Pump house. Oh, that makes more sense. Okay.
Motion to place, where are we? Item V as written. Or, uh, once language is cleared up.
Second.
Discussion. I'm just gonna make a note to the board. So the Finance Committee, I'm thinking, will probably have questions about this. And from a historical perspective, you should know that recreation, since it's been essentially removed from under the levy for the past twelve, fourteen, thirteen, fourteen years, since Doug Briggs, really. Has been paying for capital improvements to town-owned buildings. So, in terms of precedent, there is precedent that the town would not pay for something like this. I should wanna put that out there.
Yeah.
Placed it.
When the Finance Committee met last week, they did raise the question, why isn't this being paid out of recreation fees?
Yeah.
Since the town doesn't receive any funding for that. It's the Recreation Revolver account that receives funding from the pool.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
So that was what was brought up. Joe's argument is he views this as building expenses that fall under the DPW.
Uh, you know, I.
But I mean, are there private activities? I mean, there's fee-based activities that occur up there, though. So.
Like lessons.
Yeah. I guess upon further thought, I'd like to rescind my motion to place the item.
Well, geez, I didn't mean it to sound like that.
Well, I mean, I just.
I, this is probably part of a longer.
If it's not precedent.
Well, no, the precedent is, is tem, I don't say it's temporary, but recreation used to be under the levy. As money became scarcer and scarcer, and they started cutting things, rec was one of the first things to go, and it needed to be self-sustaining.
Yeah.
Um, I would argue that it got to the point where we were forcing a revolving fund, which is really not supposed to be profiteering, to pay for capital improvements on town-owned entities. So they put in the ADA compliant handicap chair at the pool. They paid for the full pool liner, the new, yeah, so I.
But if it's not accessible to the public, I mean, I would have a hard time justifying the public paying for it. Because I mean, you can't, when there's paid private activities going on there, I can't just walk in and go in the pool.
The town owns the pool and the mechanicals. It's a, it's a.
So you're saying it would be protecting town assets to roof it?
That, that's what Joe's argument is.
I haven't agreed that recreation funding should have paid for some of the capital things that they did in the past. But they did because they needed to in order to keep the pool open, and we simply didn't have the money. Um, it's, recreation is doing well right now. We'll probably hear, you know, we'll hear more about that in January when budgets start. Is it, is it time? You know, is the town gonna finally be in a, in a health state that it can begin to look again at pulling recreation in part back under the levy? The way most towns have it, where it's, you know, partly self-funding programs, but then say the recreation director's salary right now, we're not even paying that. So.
So then I, I'd like to make a motion that I rescinded to place item V, and then we can just let the public vote on it with the information. So place it as written.
Replacing it. Okay. So that's a place. And I had a second, right?
Yes.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Okay. Truck.
Uh, Joe's contract with the town says we'll provide him a vehicle to use for town-related travel. The former director's car failed inspection. It has a heater, air conditioner, and radio that all don't work. So.
Because why not all three?
Yeah.
Is it the radio that made it fail?
Uh, who knows? But, so this was used off the same specs for the fire department truck that we got last year off of the state contract.
And is this for a plow vehicle or a personal vehicle?
It's for a Ford two fifty truck that has a plow attachment that then after Joe uses it for a couple of years as the director's car, can be transitioned into the fleet at the DPW.
So this is essentially treating Joe the way the other two chiefs, they have working vehicles that belong to the town. They drive them home. They drive them to events.
And CIPC already vetted this.
Oh, they did? Okay.
I believe this, this came up. Yeah.
Can you just go through the amount? Forty-one, one. Here it's listed at thirty to thirty-five.
Uh, if you, that was, the thirty, thirty-five was so he could get it in time before the warrant closed, and then he got the quote that's attached to the next page.
So I think my question for you, you wrote available funds including free cash. Is the assumption that we're gonna be pulling some of this? No, we can't. Water sewer.
It'll, water sewer will be free cash.
That's true.
I just wanted to know.
Joe did try to pull a little bit from water, because that is part of where he's gonna be traveling to. Um, which is why he'd also like a truck, because that road is not paved and stuff like that.
You have some luxury options here as part of the quote, uh, line item. I remember this came through with a tractor that was, uh, gonna be purchased, too. There were, uh, all sorts of stuff, bells and whistles, but.
Well, it's gonna have gear, and he's gonna be responding as needed.
What's that?
I mean, it's gonna have gear and stuff that, that, that he's gonna need to do it.
Yeah, but we don't need leather seats and, you know, all sorts of stuff. I just wanna make sure that we're spending the money properly.
Where do you see leather?
Well, no, I'm just saying the SDX pack, appearance package.
Oh, I don't know what the SDX appearance package is. Do you?
Gives him the eighteen-inch rims.
See? Do we need eighteen-inch rims?
Eighteen-inch tires for the winter.
They match all the same tire sizes of all the pickups.
Yeah.
Squirtin' hairs, right?
I mean, it's two thousand dollars, but it's just all right.
I mean, you get something with plush blower and stuff like that for a work truck, it's gonna get all stanky.
It's final C, it's final four.
Yeah, you want something that's washable.
I think, you know, it's fair that Joe's gonna get the question if with the plow attachment, he's planning on doing a little bit of some plowing. This winter, it'll be his first time, I think.
No, he did some last winter, too.
Or a little bit last winter.
It's gonna be more purposeful than the two thousand nine Equinox, whatever he's driving now, Ford Escape, which doesn't serve any purpose other than a commuter.
Right.
Right? And this.
Yeah.
You know, and I, people say, oh, what about the red fire truck, you know? Well, they use that fervent, then, you know? You don't wanna use the ambulance for making your lunch run, because that's a two hundred thousand dollar vehicle. Let's use a forty thousand dollar pickup truck for.
Is that the best example?
For a lunch run. I mean, that's not really a good example.
Driving across the street, you mean?
Why not?
If I'm driving to the bar after my shift, I'm not gonna drive the ambulance.
But, I mean, he's gonna be doing everything in a, in this town vehicle, you know?
Not to say that that happens.
Purposeful.
It's an Excel package. It's not top-of-the-line.
Yeah, this was vetted by CIPC. I don't think, is that documented in here?
You can tow something, you can push something.
No, he did. Uh, it came before CIPC.
And it's on their list of approvals for, I think, this this year, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So we are in a very fortunate position to have free cash to be able to do this, considering we hired him with the promise that he would get a vehicle.
Well, and then, is it that white vehicle that had over two hundred thousand miles?
Yep. That's a direct, that's the one that has all the, yeah. It didn't pass inspection and all that other stuff.
It's placing what the people decide.
He doesn't buy an inspection, though.
No. No, I know. But there was other stuff, too. I just don't know it.
Gary was here nine years. He got it a couple of years in. Yeah.
I mean, he, it's got ridiculous miles, right?
Yeah, it's like two hundred thousand.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
It's surprising for a Ford. All right, uh, motion to place item W.
The Ford guy.
A Chevy guy. It's all right. Nobody's perfectly. Uh, motion to place item W on the agenda is written, or on the warrant is written.
Uh, Mike, there's a second for discussion. I think we might have a question regarding the bid price. I don't know if you want it on there or not.
The, which price?
For the truck.
What do you mean?
Yeah, what do you mean, the bid price?
Well, they're gonna wanna know if that's the absolute exact cost.
Yeah, it's coming from the state.
No, I know, but then you've got, uh, don't, insurance, registration, do you know what I mean? So there's gonna be some other costs as well.
If I may, I think there may be questions as to will there be, what will happen with the old vehicle? Will there be a trade-in value? Or I know that that's come up a lot in the past when we've approved, um.
Nothing's worth nothing.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna get much, but we can at least get the number.
But it will be addressed. I think, I mean, I think it'll be questioned.
But I think, though, for the, we can, we're probably already paying.
Insurance.
Insurance and registration. I think the only thing that would change would be a couple of mile things.
Transfers and stuff.
This comes with the plow?
Yep. That forty-one is with the plows.
Notable plows.
Yeah, no, I think for the money, it's actually a pretty good deal for a two fifty.
It's a Ford, I'll second.
Dick, did you have a? Why not just eliminate the plow and tell him to take one of the B plows that he's hitting the backyard down there? Hook it to a school bus.
No. Hook it to a new two fifty.
Oh, my gosh.
One B will see over there.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, it's eight oh two. We're getting there. We're only on page five, though. All right, fire. Welcome. Here we go. Sixty-one hundred dollars for Public Safety Building Purchase Services, the heating unit repairs. Then we also have, uh, you wanna do that one alone? Because we've also got ambulance wages to add to, health insurance, Medicare, uh, to match the SAFER grant. Those are both fire-related.
Was this, um, out of curiosity, Seth, when you applied for the SAFER grant, did they need, uh, a mock-up of a warrant article to make sure that we would match it?
No.
That you had to provide?
No. When they submitted, um, they notified us in probably April or May. They asked for updated benefit costs, which I got from Becky, um, to verify that the numbers that we were using were correct, which I did. And that we had a hundred and eighty days to start utilizing the grant, and they wanted to know the timeline on, from date of award to what that hundred and eighty days, would we have time to match?
But the match was required.
The match is required, yes.
Okay.
What if it doesn't pass?
Then we don't get the grant. Don't get the grant.
Yeah, there was a community that just got a Big Park grant, and they declined to do the match, so money goes away.
Twenty-seven thousand and change this year.
Yeah.
Yeah. For twenty-five percent of the yearly cost. And you have the, uh, on the next page in that section, um, you can see the breakdown over the year. So the first one is the sixty-one thousand for the repairs of the heating system. Then the next tab.
Sixty-one hundred.
Sixty-one hundred. My bad. Oh, that one would have been bad.
Oh, I see what you did. You just copied the, the front page. Got it.
The front page is copied, and the second page is the breakout.
So.
It's like a Seth spreadsheet.
I have another question through the Chair about item Y. Is then, because this is a multi-year grant, so this is gonna be a recurring match that we need to provide for the next three years?
Yeah, and that's in that spreadsheet.
But we have, and I think I'd asked you this before, there is a sustainability plan in place to make sure that this money is not being taken from anywhere else.
Correct.
Okay. Great.
All right.
Uh, motion to place item X and item Y as written.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. I guess you can leave. Is that it for you? All right. Good, good to have you here. All right. Uh, you got one from Dave here in regards to the creation of a housing trust.
Item Z. Uh, as part of the housing production plan, the statute says that we need a housing committee. One of the options for that is this housing trust. Dave believes this is the best bang for the town's buck. And he's provided a copy of the proposed language as well as the statute, going along with the creation of a housing trust. And that's located in your binders under the next section.
Uh, what is our current affordable housing percentage that we're at right now as a community?
Three percent.
Three percent?
Yep.
Pretty low.
Yeah, that's not where we want it to be. Okay, so motion to, um, place item Z as written.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we got a couple of planning boards sponsored. That's three in a row. Uh, AA, AB, AC. You've got, um, Frontage. You've got Lot Regularity.
Yep.
And you've got.
Zoning Board of Appeal Powers.
CBA Powers' update.
So the first two add definitions. Um, there is no definition of Frontage in the existing zoning bylaw. So Dave thought that that would be good to add, since that has been an issue that he's run into in his site plan review since he's been here. Similar situation with AB adding the definition of lot regularity. Um, and then, uh, AC clarifies the Zoning Board of Appeal's power under the existing bylaw with regard to use variances. These are all things that we've had issues with in the past year, um, that Dave is just looking to clean up, so we don't have those issues moving forward.
And this is full planning board sponsorship. They'll be presenting these.
The planning board will be meeting, holding their public hearings on these. Um, they have not as of yet, I don't believe.
Correct.
Um, but I know the planning board is meeting tomorrow. Um, but Dave did submit these based on conversations he had had with the Chair of the Planning Board.
Can we, can we then hold them until Planning Board boasts to move forward or not, to kind of avoid some of the issues from the last town meeting with FinCon and Planning Board?
Toe-stepping.
I mean, just because we're gonna have to meet anyway on this, so we might as well hold it and then place it.
Can I just add, if I may, that we posted an agenda for the Managed Growth Steering Committee for November sixth, which should have representatives of those boards to come in there, and the town planner requested that, so that he can explain the rationale behind the three zoning bylaws.
My other question, too, would be if this impacts, maybe this is something that's more appropriate for Planning Board, but if this impacts any existing lots or potential buildings that have already been permitted, or that are in the pipeline.
No.
This would not. This is just moving forward.
Yeah, correct.
Moving forward.
This just helps them do, this gives them extra tools to.
That is correct.
For ones that come up now.
Little cleanup.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna hold off on those three through AC, and we're headed on to AD. We sponsor Earthworks, who has just walked in, uh, to amend the town's general bylaws. And I thought you said these were cleanups, right? Easy?
They're really easy. Peter Craig.
Thank you.
May's way. Um, most of the changes are the, are because of the bylaw committees' cleanup and modernization and all of the codification efforts. There is a specific change that Earthworks requests, which is the ability to adopt regulations. Uh, we've had discussions with Town Council, and one specific opinion was that, is that that permission must be explicit in the bylaw. So we're adding a couple of words, changing a word that just says allows them to regulate to allows them to adopt regulations, to make that explicit.
Fair enough.
Regulations.
Uh, the towns, the Earthworks Board can, if this passes, will be allowed to adopt regulations regarding the movement and disturbance of earth.
But your regulations are not, not state regulations.
Correct.
So what would you relate this to for an existing board or committee?
Board of Health has regulations concerning septic concern, uh, kind of five.
That they, that they set.
That they, that they set themselves, that they.
But they're elected.
They're elected, and the, and MGL specifically allows them to pass regulation.
Right. Right.
Their Earthworks board being a local body does not by itself have the authority to adopt and enforce regulation.
Unless provided in the bylaw.
In the bylaw.
And that's the question, are there other appointed committees that have that type of ability? Will you be the first?
We, we.
But I mean, there's only.
Might be.
Might be, I'm picking up conservation.
You do have members from elected boards on the.
Conservation, uh, doesn't create any regulations, and in fact, conservation, need a conservation bylaw before it could.
No. Right, right.
And that come with the new adoption.
But those are state level, those powers.
Right.
Right.
Yep.
You do have members from elected boards.
You do.
Yes.
Not all elected, but you do.
Not all elected, but some.
Yeah, we have, we have Board of Health and, um, planning representation.
Yep.
What do other towns look like? Do they have similar bylaws?
I haven't looked into Earthworks specifically, the, the regulations we're talking about writing fall exactly under the jurisdiction of other select boards or other boards for regulating import of soils, for example, whether they're ordinary or mildly contaminated or whatever.
So I guess I, I'm asking, where did the wording, where did, where did the verbiage come from for the proposed bylaw?
Out of my little hands.
So I take it back, this is, these are massive changes.
They look like massive changes, but in fact, the, the only change, the only change that's truly substantive is in the first paragraph, the changing of the word regulating to adopt regulations. Everything else is fundamentally reformatting based on the bylaw subcommittee's work on codification and modernization.
You know home rule, is this gonna have to go to the legislature?
No.
Because it already been?
Correct. Because in fact, the home rule amendment allows the town to pass bylaws that are in accordance with MGL, so.
Yep.
We, we are, the bylaw committing is adding this enabling statute to every single bylaw, those are the, that's the enabling statute for the Earthworks board.
Okay.
So, I know you've said this a couple times, sorry.
It's okay.
You're, the proposed change that we're talking about is instead of to regulate.
Mm-hmm.
It's to adopt regulations.
Correct, that is the substantive change for the bylaw.
So then, everything will have to go through Earthworks in terms of, like, your example, importing soil?
Yes.
Okay.
Which is kind of the purpose, right?
Right.
Isn't that what the, the intention of?
That's why it was created.
I like the, the idea, my, my only concern is the, the constitution of the Earthworks as appointed, I mean, do you see that there could potentially be a conflict with, you have appointed officials that then create regulate, I mean, it's just, it's not as clean. Optically, but I, I definitely like and appreciate this as a function, it's just the constitution of it for me is a little bit concerning.
That's why I asked about other town goal buys, what other towns do that have an Earthworks?
So, Berlin, Uxbridge, the towns that have had Earthwork import issues, is anyone else doing this yet?
They have all done it by bylaw.
As in their Earthworks board may create regulation?
No, as in they have adopted town bylaws.
Oh, then that's our other option.
To regulate.
That's correct.
That you would be submitting bylaws to the town.
That then Earthworks is.
Yeah.
And tests with enforcing.
Then they have the authority for enforcing, yes.
Right.
So you're in a weird position, because obviously the next question is, has the bylaw committee reviewed this, and you are also the bylaw committee in part?
Isn't that a mess? And in fact, so is norm.
Yeah. Do we wanna sleep on this one? We're not saying no.
We have time.
There's been.
Okay.
Sure.
Alright. We might have more questions, okay.
It's a lot to digest.
True.
What a good question.
Okay, uh, police would like to be able to set speed limits on town-owned roads within thickly settled areas or business districts at twenty-five miles an hour.
State statute has them set if they're thick, thickly settled at thirty, if we adopt this statute, then it goes to twenty-five, and that's what Nick is looking to do.
So that's section seventeen and eighteen of the MGL as chapter ninety?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
And that's only, only town-owned, so state-owned, like, Main Street one twenty-two A would not fall under that, because that's state, correct?
It's rural, not thickly settled, so, so forty.
Yeah.
No, Main Street here.
I actually received, I don't know about anybody else, but several concerned emails about this issue.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which, one, it's great that people actually read the warrant, uh, or what's being proposed and put on it, uh, but, uh, the, the email concern focused around. So the, the way this basically breaks down for people that are listening is chapter, or section seventeen of chapter ninety of the Mass General Law, um, indicates that, you know, non-thickly settled, they have like a tier where it's fifty miles an hour. Uh, moderate is forty miles an hour, and then thickly settled, they set the default speed limit at thirty miles an hour, which is in the case where, like us, we don't take action on it, so the default's gonna be thirty for a thickly settled area. Um, the concern was that, and we have the right in section eighteen to set our own speed limits, so that's not the concern, it's, it's more, are we gonna be posting where these changes are made so that the public knows? So it, it's not a perception of a speed trap or, uh, revenue creating tool. Um, the other issue too is, are, are, how do we define thickly settled, because I'm imagining that's something the state defines, Peter knows, cause he's end up, and are those areas currently signed as thickly settled? So that people know, and the concerns that I had came from, um, owners that operated small businesses, maybe out of their homes, and were impacted, or they're concerned about people coming from out of town to patron those businesses, and being impacted by not knowing what the change was, and potentially being pulled over or something like that. So I just wanna make sure that when we do this, everything is conveyed to the public that this is happening, this is the new thing, and there is signage where it's appropriate.
Put them on the new red signs.
And, well, I guess.
The new red signs.
Twenty-five Ross.
Twenty-five, slow down.
I guess my question, similar parallel to that, is would there be funding available for the posted speed limits to, that it's dropped down to twenty-five, or something of the, that nature, because we know that part of the Waukesha Street. Holdup is the funding for the forty mile per hour speed limit signs on Waukesha Street itself, so.
Yeah.
I mean, is there, I guess, is there already markings to identify what in town is considered thickly settled, and how do we determine that?
I did see a new thickly settled sign up, that's on Main Street.
There are some that we're currently putting up.
I mean, do we have like a, is it state mandated, or is it internal that we define thickly settled?
I would think it'd be economically unfeasible to post every thickly settled street with a sign.
Right.
No, I mean, that's not, I guess that's, I'm just curious as to how we come up with where this is going to take, take place.
Thickly settled is houses within a quarter acre of each other for over a mile, something like that, I believe.
Oh, you have the definition.
Alright, Peter.
The definition is, uh, in, in state law is houses less than two hundred feet apart for a quarter mile or more.
Okay.
So interestingly, just cause I happen to just do it, you drive through Petersham, and all of a sudden, you're on, I guess I must spend thirty-two, and all of a sudden, there's a sign, you know, you take eleven, it's thickly settled, you look around and you go, where? You know, so clearly thickly settled is a bit subjective, you talk to some communities inside one twenty-eight, everything is thickly settled, and most likely they are enforcing that all within the entire business district, which is very, you know, heavy, heavily traveled, you know, you talk about Holden and how much traffic you're seeing, um.
Can we then, if there's no money for signs, can we just make sure that we use every, all of our social media and everything like that, just to make people aware of the change when it occurs? Cause I think it's a great idea, just.
Yeah, Peter?
I have seen signs, I don't remember which towns, but I have seen them at the entrances, below the entering, whatever town it was, that notifies people that says, thickly settled speed limit twenty-five miles per hour, that way it's obvious and you don't have to put it everywhere in town.
Oh, yeah.
The historic use of thickly settled signs is so that you, you don't have to see every house because they're obstructed by trees, for example.
Hmm.
That's the historic use of a thickly settled sign, it's not always that way now, I know.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, are we?
Through the chair, why didn't you just put it on the new signs we're putting up that coming into town?
Is that what you just said?
Thickly settled, underneath.
Did you say that?
That's what I just said, Skip.
He just said that, somebody just said that.
On the red signs. Off of the town, twenty-five.
I wasn't listening, I guess, I was.
You know, interestingly, in other states, it's an understanding that you're driving along, say in between Holden and, and Rutland, for example, and you're driving at a clip, and then you enter the, the town sort of center limits, and that speed limit drops like a rock. Um, and we don't, we don't tend to do that here, and of course, that'll be up to the state, cause one twenty-two A.
I've also seen the thickly settled signs within the twenty-five mile per hour speed limit sign underneath.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Attached to that sign, but. I think we can certainly ask the chief to sort of elaborate on where he's thinking to, um, he's probably gonna get that question on the floor anyway.
Yep.
Yeah, and then they've been great at posting things, the social media reaches a lot of people, so, so folks know.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Alright, so AE.
Uh, motion to place item AE on the board is written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, AF and AG, rescinding water, rescinding sewer, we all know why, how much do we have to talk about this?
Yep.
No, let's not, let's just approve the, I mean, we have to do it, so, um, motion to place items AF and AG on the warrant, as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, Mike, I know you have a very long explanation for these, probably planned out.
All good, all good.
Memorize it, you'll have to say it.
As we all know, we have some steps that we have to take according to the Department of Revenue in order to make the changes that we planned to make and started to make in May actually reality, so, here we go.
Yep.
AH, uh, we are now appropriating from what is free cash and replacing money that belongs in the now combined water sewer enterprise account back into the water sewer enterprise account.
Yep.
Ballpark five hundred fifty grand.
And that's total for the, between the two?
Yep.
And I have a question, and this, I should've asked earlier, but when you said the ballpark free cash number was about eight hundred thousand, does that include this five fifty?
No.
Okay, good, cause that's, I was like.
That's a good question.
Yeah, that's a good question.
I should've asked it.
No, I kept that separate and then should've said that too.
Thank you.
Sewer, sewer closed with a deficit of two hundred and fifty-something thousand dollars, water closed with a balance of seven hundred eighty-one thousand dollars, so when you close out sewer with what was in water, we'll have five hundred something left. Um, both accounts had revenue deficits. Um, water was short eighteen thousand dollars in what we projected in revenue, sewer was short fifty thousand dollars in what we projected in revenue.
Why?
That's, Dan and I were surprised when we found that.
We just raised the rates based on a study.
Yeah, so that was pre-rate raise.
Pre-rate raise.
So that should be closed out now with the new rates.
Hope so.
Yeah, if it's not, we're, we're gonna have a whole new board coming up, uh.
But, um, so the new rate should cover that, um, but those are, because we have to pay the DCR bill and the sewer deficit on top of it, that's why.
So that's well worth a handout.
Yeah.
Alright.
Got it.
Where were we?
Motion to place.
Age.
Whether, are you gonna act on that one tonight?
Yeah.
Wait.
AH?
Yeah.
There, there was no motion.
No, I know, AH, ready?
Yep, okay.
Who, who would like to make this motion?
Motion to place AH is presented.
Excellent.
Second.
Any more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and now we paid the bill.
And can I just, I know, sorry.
AI. Yeah.
This, all this water sewer stuff, I know it's been like the monster that won't leave us alone, but can we please make sure that through, like, every channel is good to go with this, like?
Yep, the, the, this language has already been sent to DOR for approval, to make sure that we meet there.
And legal and DOR and all branches of DOR.
Yep.
And, and moving forward, I know Dan had some plans to be transparent with the ratepayers relative to some reporting at the end of either the fiscal year or maybe the end of the calendar year, so everybody can get a snapshot of what happened and where we are.
Yeah.
Can include it in the bills and, yeah.
Thank you.
Did I skip something?
Nope.
AI, AI, time to pay the bill, sewer transportation and treatment.
So this is the DCR bill, um.
Two thirteen?
Yep, I know, the next one.
The next one?
Yeah, see it.
Kill me.
That's the same, that's the same one. This is the amount of two hundred thirteen thousand four hundred seventy-seven dollars and nine cents.
Kinda do, right?
Uh, Mike, that number is not going to change, correct?
Correct.
That is well worth putting in this article, write it in.
Alright.
Yeah. Could I have a motion?
Make a motion to, uh, approve item AI with the inclusion of the two hundred thirteen thousand four seventy-seven oh nine.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, AJ.
Thirty thousand, oh, go ahead.
Our big fancy sign.
Thirty thousand dollars for a two foot by seven foot electronic message board sign. This is from, um, Serrato Signs and Steiners and Sons Sign, working together, got us that quote.
Need it.
I, I know there's been a lot of discussion about trying to see this paid for outside of tax monies, I totally get that, and we, you had such success in getting the entrance signs, the welcome signs paid for, um, that comes with the flip side of, they are, they are sponsored, and that's just the way things work, and it's business. This sign, being in the center of town, being the, what we expect to be the primary center of information, is it appropriate now to say that the taxpayers probably need to fund it? And you know, I owe Louis Nakulio a phone call back, cause he was, he's been trying to get, um, just privately, to see who might step up and fund something like this, and this is a tough one, it's a big sign, it's a big number, so.
Let's hold him good, yeah.
I don't think this one should have advertising on it.
Yeah, no.
No.
Should we control it?
Yeah, I would agree with that, I mean, the issue is thirty thousand dollars, do we need an electronic sign, because it's not thirty thousand dollars we're spending. And I'm glad to hear that we got the quote from a local vendor, um, uh, Worcester, that specializes in these things, because being a little bit knowledgeable about how they work, you're gonna need somebody to service it frequently.
I think they talked about that when it came.
That adds to that thirty thousand dollar cost, and it's also, what is the life expectancy of a sign, is it five years, is it ten years, I mean, that's, that's a lot of money for ostensibly to advertise events, you know, that's my only thought.
I think.
If I may, I think one of the things we hear a lot throughout town is that people don't know about things that are happening, and that's not just events, it's some bigger things, town meetings and that kind of stuff. Town's been really great the past year and a half, two years with social media, but not everybody's on social media, so I think that this is one, not everybody gets the newspaper, not everybody, is it in a landmark, is it in the TNG, like, I think that this is one more way to get knowledge, important information out to townspeople that may not otherwise have it, but it comes at a cost, for sure, so.
You know, if, if people wanna know, though, and they wanna be involved, they know when they're involved, I don't think anybody drives by the center of town saying, you know what, I was gonna go on vacation that Tuesday, but there's a meeting coming up that I'm really gonna go to.
It's not so much vacation, but it's more like, oh, I didn't know that there was a meeting, and I drive through town four times a day because I'm going to kids' activities, or, you know, I'm going to the library, or to the marketplace, or something, and had there been a way to advertise important information. Um, I know that there was a lot of positive feedback when Gary had the electronic signboard up at the center of town, just as a reminder that the tax bills were due, and if there is any big, um, events coming up that was gonna impact traffic, or, I mean, it also, it was.
Mm-hmm.
Some local events also, for sure, s, you know, that may not be of interest to the whole entire town, but it's an avenue to get more information out.
Okay.
We're spending seven thousand dollars on a printer, you know, flatter.
This could pay for almost half of an F two fifty that we could give to somebody else.
You know, as a, as a, as a, as a community builder, I think probably the amount is right, I mean, I was lucky enough to be available, when the company came out, they were wonderful, they have offered to bring an example of the sign to town meeting, so people can see what it's capable of.
Yeah, and he's a good job.
And obviously, and obviously, one of their discussions was, you can pay less, and it's all about the pixels these days, but what you're gonna end up with won't necessarily stand the test of time, when you're looking at how much technology is changing and how rapidly, and, and this is, this is not the top of the line, so, but he felt like it was what we needed for our location that we were thinking about, and what we were talking about doing with it.
Do we need to bid this out?
No.
Why?
The thirty thousand includes the sign, that's the electronic part.
Mm-hmm.
Plus the top piece, which Steiner's doing, and then the, started the bottom parts attached, I just, where it breaks.
Three separate vendors, three separate projects.
Yeah. Yep. We could bid it out, and S, uh, Serrato and Steiner all said.
No, my, my fear is that if you, you bid it out and get somebody that folds on a year, that's not going to be responsive to the needs to get the thing fixed and serviced.
Yeah.
Um, that's my concern. Um, that's my concern, and there's two very reputable sign companies in Worcester that do this specifically, that have been around for decades.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we can, we can earmark the thirty thousand, let the people decide, and if you can, in the meantime, reach out to those other two vendors.
Well, no, one of them was the one that came and presented, actually.
Oh, well, then it is what it is.
Yeah, to Leah's point, I do think we've been missing out, you know, Joe was right in not letting us use the sign anymore, when it's not an emergency, but we, we were, we were conveying a lot of important information, that we haven't been able to do.
Just pestering them all the time.
Would the sign, would the information go through your office?
Yep.
As to what's posted?
Yep.
Alright.
We'd use it all the time.
Yeah.
If we could put it right in front of Dunkin' Donuts, it'd really, really distract people.
I, I, you know.
Oh, that's gonna be a nightmare for that section, yeah.
Right? Where's it gonna go?
Thank you.
Where's it gonna go?
So people are looking at the sign instead of paying attention to driving.
Uh, he brought that up as far as sightlines and the rehabilitation issues, and you know, how big you make the letters, how much you could fit on something, in some cases, it'll be pictures, the, the sign is capable of posting pictures of things that might be going on.
Slow down.
Yeah.
Speed limit down twenty-five.
Yeah, right.
Alright, well, I'm, I'm time-placing it, just wanna bring it up.
No, I think it's important.
Motion? Motion to place, uh, article, is it AJ, uh, I'm sorry, item AJ is written.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
That was our article, select board put that up.
Yeah, right, alright.
That was our article.
How do people feel about AK, five thousand dollars, Town Tree Farm? Joe's not here.
Uh, it's planting trees, uh, if this, if we do it, we can have matching funds to apply for the DCR forestry grant, um, where we're not an environmental justice zone, or that we don't have any in town, it's a fifty-fifty match, so we could potentially get up to ten thousand dollars with the trees if we do it, if not, we at least have the five thousand to start planting places.
Where's it gonna go?
Where's he gonna put tree farm?
Uh, he'll store them behind the DPW to be used within the year, so we're not moving them when they're massive.
So just to kinda clarify, this is in the instance, correct me if I'm wrong, but like, um, in Worcester, they had the Asian Longhorn Beetle, and had to deplete all the tree stock, and this would be an instance where if we had an ice storm, or a pest infestation, we could replenish some of our trees and our shade trees, and, uh, with, without having to spend a long time doing it, it would be, I think this is a good idea.
Yeah, when I was in Gardner, too, we had a tree stock, that way, if we went out and cut a tree down on someone's property, we had the option, if they'd like us to, to replant, to replace the tree that we just took down.
I was just gonna say, I think we've heard some of the town-owned shade trees and stuff need to be looked at in the coming years.
Yeah, even working, working with different municipalities that have parks where trees have outlived, you know, placements changed, and the trees are kind of in bad shape, it gives us the opportunity to, if we take an aerial look at a park and say, these don't work anymore for the, the way that we want the park to flow, or if we change the use, we can then replant the new trees, and it's just, it's, I think it's good all around.
I've seen some of the streets where Worcester is implementing this, and they look beautiful, I will say.
It's been a long time coming, that was a huge problem.
Yeah, I, I will say, this is gonna be, this is a progressive article for Rutland, Joe's gonna need to be prepared to defend this.
And coming from Worcester, I think he certainly has the background to do it, I mean, that's been a huge issue over there, and that's only two communities away.
And he's not wrong, you know, he wasn't here during the ice storm, but when you think about the trees we lost during the ice storm, um, not all of which were our choice, but National Grid came in and, and made some decisions, and so, we haven't replenished those, we don't have a program in place, I'm looking at you, our resident tree cutter.
I was never so happy in my life to see, uh, some of these loggers come in and really clean back the roads that they did.
We lost some historic trees that other towns would have fought tooth and nail for.
Very true. But we don't lose power.
No, we don't lose power, thank God, we can still turn.
I don't think we're replacing two hundred year oaks, I think this is more, this is more, in the instance where, you know, it's practical to do so.
To me, it's a question of where, where, a nice piece of property for something like this, and, and keep an eye on it, but, uh, you don't want it on the northernly side of a hill, or you don't, you, somebody better take some time to think of where would be a good spot to put this.
Well, I'd be surprised if he doesn't put it on Main Street where that old little tree center was.
Johnny Appleseed?
No, uh, not Johnny Appleseed, it was, uh.
Yes, well, it was the Catholic Church was there, that's a town of Rutland piece of property.
Yeah, where they used to have a little.
It was, it was Johnny Appleseed, uh, something on Johnny, whatever.
Alright. Hang on.
Well, it's, it's short money, and it's, I think environmentally, it's a good impact, so.
It's a wonderful program, I'm just, this is gonna.
The people decide.
Motion to place item AK on the warrant as written.
Second. Discussion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
The next one's Joe's capital plan for water and sewer that he presented to the board.
Great.
Yeah, we need that. Motion to place item AL on the warrant, it's written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, and just note, this is borrowing, and, uh, as a note for us later, this is one, we're gonna wanna shift, keep with all the water sewer things together.
Yep.
And I think, oh, sorry, can I just add, I think he has here his kind of timetable, but I think that for, um, the public to know the timeline, we hear a lot about all the water main breaks and everything, and just
Yeah.
his kind of priority and everything would be beneficial.
Yeah, also included in that section of your binders is the debt schedule from Becky and our bond counsel, too.
Yep.
Great.
Thank you.
Great. We have a motion with a second?
Do I?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fantastic. Lix from Public Works as well, five thousand for demolition, cleaning up properties, the town has taken through tax title, you have some, I think Mike said pictures, right, Mike?
Yep, uh, so there's two properties that we own in the Cool Sandy Beach neighborhood, one has a garage shed on it, the other one has a house on it that's on stilts over a running stream.
Town owns it?
Town owns it, outright.
We see those, right?
Yep, we got them in tax title, both are condemned, both are falling apart, the roof is not full on either structure, Joe, uh, we have a problem property working group of department heads, so we all took a walkthrough of Cool Sandy Beach.
Great, how's that progressing?
Great.
Awesome.
And, uh, so Becky joined us for that one, as she had never seen some of the properties we have in tax title, and, um, that was the first, most of us had seen these, and the one that's a full house has a padlock on it that the building department put on, um, that's hanging loose there, because the door was kicked in, there was a wood stove that was not, or a, a little.
Like a drug raid or what?
No, it's just, there's people who will vandalize, spray paint, things like that in there, and
Right.
we're looking to just tear it down, the five thousand dollars is, uh, excavator with a thumb to knock it down and floor.
That's enough to take care of the fabric.
Yep.
You can do a control burner, is it too close to houses?
Too close to, yeah.
I think that this is, uh, at this point, these buildings are just public safety hazards.
Yeah.
And I really fully support, I mean, it's good to hear the problem properties thing is kinda taking shape, because this is the kind of stuff that keeps these communities safer.
Yep.
And it keeps the town's housing stock not a liability for public safety officials.
Yeah, if you go to the map that's right before the first picture, you'll see, um, that's the next one. What is in pink, we already own, um, Pine Way was never put in, um, so all those parcels that are at that street that doesn't exist.
That's all town land right there?
That's all town land, of everything that's in pink, and in blue, we own as well, the reason why it's shaded two different colors is everything in pink, there's just a small shed on the corner, that's the first picture, and then that house is on the blue. Uh, everything that's in yellow, we currently have in tax title, that's currently in land court with us, and the green isn't a payment plan with us in tax title.
Alright.
Um, I have a question for the five thousand dollars, i- are there any environmental concerns that it's going, that need to be taken into consideration?
I wouldn't say with these, they look like they were just built.
Seasonal camps.
Yeah.
No, I just wanted to make sure, like.
And for demo, it's usually, I mean, pretty less.
Yeah.
Now, motion to, uh, to place item AM on the, uh, the warrant as written.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wayne, if it's alright with you, item AN, AO, and AP are all related to each other, I can just do a blanket explanation for all of them.
Yep.
Uh, these are all properties we have in tax title, you'll see a map of them in your, um, binders, the owner, uh, is a developer, Mr. Israel. He has since passed away, his attorney reached out to us, saying he cannot find any surviving heirs, so in an effort to save both he and the town legal fees, rather than going through land court, since we're gonna own them through land court anyway eventually, he's looking to deed in lieu of foreclosure to the town.
What state are these parcels in?
They're not built on.
There's no development on any of these parcels?
No, in fact, one of the roads that goes through the properties is not even.
He's off of Sherland Drive or something, Prescott Street here?
Sherland Drive.
Yep.
Karen Way.
Unfortunately, uh, the other one, Karen Way, was it?
Karen Eden.
And, uh, that does not go up the, uh, Prescott Street, that's bad, because, uh, it would have connected with the original development problems, right?
Through the chair, what is the town gonna do with these parcels? I mean, that's.
Well, we can look to sell them, we can look to, um, do what we would normally do, and after we take something from, by tax title, um, where there's no, we didn't expect the attorney to basically offer to gift them.
I mean, if these went through the regular process, then they're, they would then be available on the free market.
Which is what they could be if we take ownership of them.
It's, it's possible, Mitch, that, you know, as part of this sort of grand look at long-term planning for the town and, and construction projects, that some of these are locations that we need to take a look at, a close look, before we just put them up for sale, which is not to say they might not ultimately go onto the open market, or up for auction.
I just don't like taking properties off the tax roll, I mean, that's just, it's a lot of properties here, and not into land banking as a community.
We're paying the taxes.
Well, no one's paying the taxes, I'm just saying, there's no potential that if we do something else with it, that.
There's a lot of wetlands involved.
Yep.
So be careful there, there were ten house lots that are, you're talking about, and, uh, like I say, we don't even know what the infrastructure's, structure is there, and I do remember as- uh, asbestos piping being in the ground, probably for sewer, or who knows what, you know, back then. Uh, but, number two, I think it'll be a good idea, we do not have low-income housing enough in this town, and I think any pieces of property that the town takes over should have it for low-income housing. We have to get up to the ten percent somehow, so why not try that way?
So, I have a.
But who's gonna be developing that, though? I mean, that's just a, a huge process for the town to undergo.
I know, but there, hey, hey, how else you gonna do it?
So, just to be clear.
But that's another, another.
Out of, out of all these properties, right now, the outstanding balance, is this right, forty-six thousand dollars?
Yep.
And that's going back to twenty fifteen. Some of it's recent.
No one's been paying the taxes since the developer passed away.
Actually, there's a second parcel, or a second list here, that's another twelve, so, we're looking at around sixty.
About seventy thousand.
Yes.
Talking about the city, yeah?
Sixty, about sixty.
Um.
Twenty-eight.
This doesn't exist.
Yeah, those roads, some, certain roads haven't been put in yet.
They haven't been put in at all.
It comes down in here, and it ends right there, so this road doesn't exist.
Yep, and everything.
This doesn't exist.
Yeah, everything shaded gray is what they're looking to deed in lieu of foreclosure.
He came to the town a long ago, trying to get Karen Way to come out.
Yeah.
And, uh, I was on the planning board then, and we shot him down, said, no way, he's still got work to do in, in the other streets, and that was the last time he's ever been to town, I think.
And he came, he came to town, he tried to give the property, and I remember Skip was on the board at the time and says, no, we're not gonna take it, you know, and lose it, and then he turned around to DCR and tried to give it to DCR, and they rejected also.
So speaking of the planning board, has, has anybody reached out?
This was just, Becky reached out this morning, too.
It'll be, I believe it's on the agenda for tomorrow.
Alright, so should we hold it then?
Can we hold it until planning board takes a look at it?
Hold, the big giant one, great.
Follow him?
Yeah, the following three.
So we're holding off on AN, AO, AP, all Israel properties. And we're on to AQ, uh, the walkway.
We've applied for a grant for this, uh, in your packets, our, um, where this number came from, through Weston Sampson, saying if you were to replace the walkway at the community center to standard, this is the dollar number that we would use. You'll have to skip by a couple of the, um, AN, AO, AP, um, each one article on the warrant, even if it's duplicated material, we'll have it, something for that separate article, so that's why that, so the middle bracket is the community center, so that eighteen thousand dollar, uh, eighteen thousand four hundred sixty-eight dollars is what they are saying to bring that walkway up to code and full use.
I mean, I think it's really important, that walkway is awful.
It's not ADA compliant, you have kids using it, the elderly using it.
It's not safe, for anybody.
I almost, I took the baby up for a visit the other day, and the stroller just almost careened into, uh,
Yeah.
Which, you know, it's, it's pretty bad.
In the winter, it's just puddles of ice right there, it's just.
And even if we build something new, I mean, we're still gonna own the building, so you might as well keep it ADA compliant, or make it so now.
Yeah.
So that it helps us down the road.
And this includes handrails, walk handrails.
This gets us to ADA compliance, correct?
And lighting, which, lighting is huge up there, too.
And the grant is still pending.
Yeah. Mid-December.
If we get the money through another means, we can just repurpose, have the town vote to repurpose for something else.
Right.
Place it.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to place item AQ as presented.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, um, Mike, just another note on this one, probably to put that with the tables and chairs.
Yep.
Since it's the same building.
Okay.
Where are we, AR, oh, fire department, we told them you could leave.
Um, the, this is the extra money he, that we are receiving from OCAM, that in the agreement says to cover the extra cost of the sharing, the chief.
So we're just accepting it and appropriating it?
Yeah.
So, motion to place item AR.
Do, second, but I have a question, do we include the dollar amount in there, because the email here says if worst-case scenario, it would be that, right?
That's, so, okay, excellent question, so the IMA that we signed goes for three months with the option of extending another thirty days. After that, OCAM's already kind of suggested to Seth that this may be something we look to continue for the end of the fiscal year, that would be the equivalent amount if we were to go all the remaining of the fiscal year, um, that Seth would be owed us, doing the extra work as OCAM's chief on top of ours.
So I guess my question is, do we include the dollar amount here, or do we put the, just something about for the IMA with, you know?
Okay. Yeah, I would say put the dollar amount in, otherwise, we can't leave it open-ended, otherwise, we're gonna run into issues like the hundred fifty thousand dollars in May. Um, if we don't use it, it just falls to free cash, in the end, because it's in a salary line item, so.
I guess, my question is, does the town already have this, though? Or is this going to be?
It's paid monthly by, by OCAM.
Right.
You have to appropriate it.
We'd have to appropriate from ambulance receipts, yeah.
Right, no, I'm, but I'm questioning, is the town definitely going to have this total amount to appropriate?
What we're using. That, I, I get her question, Mike, I think the language of this article might need to change, this is very unusual for us to be essentially taking in payment for another town, and that payment will revert to general fund, we can't earmark it, and we'll actually have to repay, repay our own free cash, once it's certified, cause we're already into our fiscal year, this is an odd one.
Yeah, so basically, what we're, this is all ambulance receipts, so it has to go into the general fund, but if we appropriate from ambulance receipts to the chief's salary line item, then it goes in as a receipt, they can, uh, Dan, look, this, it can, we're filling that amount to, and then we'd have to go back and change the payroll certification, adjust Seth's pay, and.
Dan thinks it's okay to put OCAM's payment for a chief with an IMA into ambulance receipts?
It's okay to appropriate money into a line item, like we're doing with the other lines we're refilling, he's looking to see what the process is, this is one I would wait on, until we have further clarification.
Can we just hold it then, until we have clarification?
Yeah, because I think my question is, is the town definitely going to have this dollar amount?
And the answer's no, because if we only go four months and set it to the end of the year, then we're gonna need.
But we can word it in a way to where we can get to where we need to be with it.
Up to appropriate that number.
Right, well, and that's, that's kind of.
And that's what we're looking at, still figuring out.
Okay, great.
Okay, seeing some major language changes there, alright, so we're moving on to AS, uh, traffic and design study for sixty-eight and Watchu's Street, and do we have them out?
Not yet, Joe's waiting for DOT to get back to him on that one.
Oh, dear God.
I don't wanna place anything on that one.
Yeah.
Um, I think people are asking fair questions, is there any reason to not put up some of the signage that we talked about?
No, Joe's just, is ordering it.
Okay.
That's all. Um, AT and AU, I'd like to explain a little bit, um, because they're related to what we first did on the warrant, um, our financial policies say we should, they, they call out an amount that we should be aiming at as a goal for stabilization and capital stabilization, but they also call out an amount for our conservation fund. Uh, and we hadn't, we haven't put really any money into it for a while, there's a balance of ten thousand dollars currently into it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so since I put articles on as, for the board to review, as a way to reach toward hitting the goals set in the financial policies that the town adopted, um, I put in a request to put money into the conservation fund, and because the policies were written pre, prior to the agricultural fund being passed at the Maytown meeting, I thought that those two funds are close to each other, so to treat them at par, so I did put a request for money to go into the agricultural fund as well.
Have either Concom or AgCom heard about this yet? Was this just for our?
Prior to today, no, this is.
Brand-new initial discussion, okay.
Stick holder.
Does the.
It's a placeholder, yeah, sure did. I was thinking thirty-seven fifty, which would be half a percent of our projected free cash. And that was included.
And what these things would be used for, would they want to be used for essentially?
Well, like, AgCom under the new MGL has the ability to purchase land and this is.
For three thousand dollars?
No, of course not, but, you know, to start somewhere.
Start somewhere.
Yeah. We have these policies in place saying we need to work to hit these goals.
Well, actually, Martin and Israel's, they're giving us land for free, so maybe thirty-seven fifty can get them something.
Um, if you look at the spreadsheet that I have, at the first couple items and for this one, too, you'll see where this would
Yeah.
put us in that range.
So basically, you included these as a step in the right direction, a small step?
Yeah. The conservation item in the town financial policy said we should be aiming at an equivalent amount in the account to two percent of the annual operating budget. Excuse me, I think I put on that spreadsheet, we're at zero point zero two percent, or something around that range in that item.
How much were you asking for the ag, ag commission?
Same amount for both, thirty-seven fifty.
Approving, is this on the spreadsheet? Approving everything tonight? Had we placed everything, what was our grant hold?
Um, it changed today because of that computer thing, so I'd have to go back and check, because it could be thrown off by a lot.
The town has a lot of other needs that are very pressing. Allocating or tying up what essentially is two percent of our annual operating budget into these funds, is that the wisest use of the money? I guess is my question.
I thought it was half of one percent.
It's one. It's not two percent, it's one percent.
Half of one percent going, of free cash going into it. The goal in the policies currently is to eventually hit two percent of it.
Are we in a position to do that, or should we wait until some debt is lifted? Forty-four?
We also have infrastructure needs. I just, uh, it just seems like a bad time to be putting money into something.
Alright, are we going to?
Well, we can let the people decide, or we can.
Put a pin in it? Do you wanna put a pin in it? You see what people say on Thursday?
I would like to put a pin in it and see what people, I mean, I kind of.
Let's get FinComs, maybe a touchback.
Thursday, Thursday?
Yeah, FinComs, but also let AgCom and Concom hear back also, like.
Of course, they're gonna want money. I mean, who's gonna want money?
No, but I mean.
But they're also taxpayers.
Right.
They might say, we can wait a year. They might say, I don't know.
Right, or maybe, oh, yeah.
They should at least be involved in the discussion.
I mean, I think that some of this needs to come into the discussion when we talk about the master plan as a whole, kind of the vision for the town and the, the direction the town wants to go. So I'm not opposed to putting this in if the money is available, but I'd like to also hear kind of where we're falling now with the increased computer fees and everything.
I think everybody's also gonna wanna know what our bottom line is. You know, we, we still wanna set aside minimum one fifty for the next fiscal, and they're gonna wanna know how much we'll carry into the spring.
Yeah.
That might inform this.
Table till Thursday.
Yep, we're tabling.
And most of the things that's like, you know, APR, say something wants to go APR, the town usually puts a certain percentage in with the APR, too. So it's nice to have some of that set aside for that. Agricultural preservation restrictions, yeah.
Yeah. Alright, AV added late, and that's, you talked about that in your update, and that amount is?
We'll find out tomorrow when RJ comes out.
Find out tomorrow. You know, those two amounts that we're waiting for is clearly gonna help make the decision on
Yeah.
conservation act. Uh, so do we wanna wait for that number as well on the oil tank?
I would.
That'd be astronomical.
Well.
We're gonna need to do it.
This is just the repair.
Yeah.
This isn't putting a new oil tank in.
I, you know, it's gonna be small time, a small amount of time to discuss it again and place it. At least we know now what we're dealing with.
Oh yeah, I would still wait. I'm just saying, it's just not the full tank.
Okay, and then we have the last one, which.
This is one of our underground stuff.
The recall.
Just a placeholder.
Yeah, the recall placeholder.
Yep, so that's our last one, which we can do now. We can wait. We can see what people say Thursday, whatever we wanna do.
We can just place it now. I mean, we've been kinda talking about it for a couple of months. There's public interest in it. Two hundred communities en masse have one, or over two hundred in place, which is about.
That was one oh nine.
No.
So the Secretary of State cited one oh nine? That was like a third. It doesn't matter, go ahead.
How does it read?
Best practice. Well, that's the thing is, the reason we kinda wanted to bring it up on prior agendas the last couple of months is that if we had time, we could task bylaw subcommittee or somebody with providing us with kind of a best practice for some of the towns and areas around. But I think that's something where the legal department or law is going to have to define that in terms of like the voting appropriate numbers and things like that, uh, to get us to where we need to be. So.
Do you know overall how most of the towns got it? Was it resident petition? Was it placed by an existing board? Was it?
In terms of the mix, I don't. Um, I've seen it in other communities, uh, master plans as a goal or objective. But in terms of the actual process, um, for best case, or best practice, I'm not familiar. Again, it's just something that I think a lot of municipalities en masse have. It is a best practice. It adds to the democracy we have in town. If someone were caught embezzling or stealing, we have no provision right now to remove that individual democratically. You could even have a scenario where, uh, folks could be participating in board meetings from, uh, prison or remotely. Uh, it's just something that safeguards, I think, the election process and that the people of the town would be interested in.
Do we have the wording of what would be proposed for the, I mean, is this a?
It's a placeholder, so legal would have the opportunity to provide something.
Did we get comments back from anybody about it?
Officially, we haven't received something in the office yet.
I mean, my, I guess. I would hope that it's not something that's taken lightly, because I think that any sort of recall or special election or anything is costly.
It's not. Everything would have to go to the state for review prior to there being a recall election.
Right, and it's also, I was trying to say that it would be costly to this, to the town to hold these special elections also. So I would hope that it's not something that would just be that it would be very seriously considered and not just.
It is rare. I, I would though ask you, what's more costly to the town? If you have an individual that needs to be recalled? Or if you have a three thousand dollar special election to remove that individual that's been vetted by the state? Um, and that's why it's a best practice in the majority of mass communities.
I think it's a little bit more than three thousand dollars, but I'm not disagreeing with you.
Well, that, that number came from the clerk's office, so.
Is that what Anita said? That was six.
She put a range of three to six.
Three to six, okay.
I had five in my head, but.
So what is the word, I mean, what would the wording be that, if this was placed before the, the meeting? Would, I mean, this is, there's nothing in the binder.
Legal would have to draft something. Again, we've been trying to get it on the agenda for two months, so we could at least task bylaw subcommittee or somebody to come up with wording so we could discuss it. If it wasn't allowed, now we don't have the wording we need.
You didn't wanna, you didn't wanna pull it from other towns and?
I mean, I, we could pull something the other towns use, but I thought it would be best if we tasked our legal team that we pay for or our bylaw subcommittee to somewhat, that, something that works specifically for this community and something the board is comfortable with.
What's the closest town to us that has a recall provision?
I'd rather have our own.
Well, that's the thing, if we have our own. I mean, Berry has one. Again, we could pull from, from myriad communities throughout mass that have them. And it's, it's not something that's taken lightly. Again, this isn't something where the people don't like someone, they vote them out. This is if an egregious act is committed, if there's fraud, if there's embezzlement, um, something like that, to where the people of the town then have the ability to weigh in on whether that person should continue to serve in their official position. So it just, it empowers the greater public.
Just to be clear, though, Mitch, I can appreciate that that's the ideal situation for it. It's not always the situation. In many cases, it's begun because people have strong feelings about a particular person, and they're not comfortable waiting for the democratic process to kind of take its way through because of the time commitment. So for example, we don't have any boards here in Rutland that wouldn't be able to fully turn over in more than three years, right? So any of these, like our board, we could have a full turnover in three years. Planning can as well. You have five-year terms, but still, the turnover's three. And the turnover for a majority is only two. And that's actually for all of us as well, and of course with Board of Health with only the three members. And so, you know, I'm looking, and I, I think we all probably did some research about it, but you look at some of the recalls, and here's one in Greenfield from last year, and you're right, they're rare. It was, the recall effort was based on complaints about some of the person's comments at public meetings.
But that effort didn't go forward. The state has to review what is being put forward and has to approve it, which is a failsafe that's built in to ensure that the matter of recall is for serious. Again, this i- is serious. This isn't something that has to do with popularity or anything like that. The public can do what they like, but at the end of the day, the state has the oversight to ensure that this is serious enough to warrant a recall.
All recalls are reviewed by the state?
So the petition, yeah, I mean, the petition, I don't think that's correct.
It's my impression that most of the communities that have recalls have to go and be approved by the Attorney General's office, which then comes back to our town to hold the election.
No. No, so recall is a home rule petition. That first petition, which actually Uxbridge just approved it this past January, they've been fighting for it for years, that went to the legislature for approval. Once you have home rule, and that is now part of your town, whether it's charter, bylaw, whatever framing you have, you no longer need to go to legislature. You need your signatures, and it goes. You get your signatures based on the path, and actually, I think that might be the question, right? It's what those caps are and what number of signatures you need, and then you incite a special election.
So what is the fear of placing it, seeing what law can come up with, and then giving the town the right to vote, whether or not this is something they want?
Because I think, if I'm getting this, I mean, what is the number of votes to have something put on the ballot? Can you get thirty-five, thirty-five signatures, and now you're forcing the town to do a six thousand dollar?
That would have to be determined by what, it'd be determined by what we put forward. So we have to put forward something that the town feels comfortable with.
That's why I like, that's why I like best practices of other towns to compare to, uh, on what they're, what they're using and why.
Recall is, recall, I think is fair to say, is a very divisive process to go through. Here's another one in Dayton, September twenty eighteen, petitioners failed to submit enough valid signatures, but they started it.
I mean, if we're gonna start reading stuff off the news, that's one thing.
Well, no, it's just the.
But we could have fleshed this out and talked about it if we had put it on the agenda two months ago, but there wasn't a desire to do that, which you all voted against. And I'm curious as to why that occurred in the first place, because now we have to have a discussion whether to place on the warrant, and we don't have any language, and we don't know what the numbers are. We need to have these discussions if this is something the public wants.
Well, let me explain. I personally don't consider it a role of this board to place this as a warrant article in a special town meeting. It was part of the reason why I indicated that I would like to hear from the other elected boards, because it does affect them in many ways, as it affects finances, which is why FinCom may or may not have an opinion on it, I don't know. Um, I do know that it's rare. Uh, we've had other situations where people brought forth things to us that we felt were not in the province of the board to decide on. So typically speaking, and what you're talking about is true. If there is a portion of the community, a percentage of the community that wants to see something change relative to a town, so again, we're not talking about regular processes. We're not talking about, you know, we just worked with eight hundred thousand dollars worth of, that's our job. Where does the money go? How are the departments being managed? I don't see this as our job.
But if you didn't see it as our job, and you don't want, you don't think it's the boards, in, within the board's purview to put this on the warrant,
It is.
why didn't we put it on the agenda two months ago to have that discussion then versus right now?
Because this is the only discussion to have, which is whether or not to place it.
No, it's not. It's the discussion to have is, what is the best practice in other communities? Can we task someone with coming up with language that we could then look to place on the warrant? Because now all we have is a placeholder with no language. This, this is not the only place and time to have this discussion. We have other important policy discussions throughout the course of the year.
I mean, Mitch, you, you could've brought us some options. I.
I've tried to for the last two months, Sheila.
No, but there's nothing tonight. There's nothing in the binders. There is nothing submitted. This has been, as a placeholder.
So we can't send this to our legal to come up with something that's best practice?
I'm just asking you the question, because we don't have anything.
Does it have to be at the special meeting, or is this something that could be presented at the annual with, hey, this is, this is the best practice, and this is the reason why, we would like to submit this up to our legal for put before the, the genu, the, the general population at the annual meeting? But I have to agree with, with the chair, there's nothing, there's nothing here. It just says article blank, recall provision placeholder.
We have a bunch of placeholder articles that we placed on this warrant. I, I'm just confused as to why this hasn't been put on the agenda, and this is not being placed on the warrant as a placeholder, so at least we have the opportunity
Well, hold on.
to design something that is a best practice.
We're having a discussion about whether or not to place it. We just don't have anything tonight to discuss relative to backup.
Because you did not allow anything to be discussed.
Mitch, we're here. We're here to discuss it. We don't have anything. We're here tonight to discuss it.
Sheila, we could've taken two months to develop something to discuss tonight. I think you have a conflict that prevents this from being an issue that you wanna move forward, which is why you're not moving forward on it. Now, we can rehash what we think that conflict is. I don't think that's appropriate.
Could you, I'm just gonna ask you to speak only for yourself.
No, absolutely not. I, I.
You won't speak just for yourself. Okay.
No, I'm speaking for myself, but I believe you should recuse yourself from this issue.
I will not.
Of course.
I am going to sit here and say unequivocally that I am against recall. I think it's divisive to a town. I think it tries to subvert the democratic process.
This is the democratic process.
Mitch, let me finish. I think it tends to come from situations where people have personal vendettas that they're trying to settle, and they cannot wait for a regular election. I will think that, whether I'm sitting here, or whether I'm sitting there, or whether I'm sitting at home or in a nursing home, it's my personal opinion. Not my personal, I have an agenda, or I have, I, I, whatever you're alluding to.
Okay.
It's not. I'm stating this for a fact. I am against recall. I've seen it in multiple communities. I think we all have. I don't know that it's a healthy thing for any community. It's why it's rare, but when it does come up, it comes up for a reason, and it's very rarely a reason that requires, I think probably Fall River is the best example of a situation where in fact recall was a very good option that maybe they could've had, and it still didn't work for them. Now, that's a very special case. I think Fall River in general is, is an unusual and hopefully will never happen again case. But it just goes to show, when, when we have a town, you know, and to your point, we're sitting here arguing about whether or not to spend three thousand dollars, when we can get a very small group of citizens that may or may not have very personal issues, or they might have something that's merited, that can then incite a town to have to spend up to six thousand dollars on a special election, when the problem could also be corrected by other means, whether that person ends up resigning, or whether you wait until an election, I mean, look at this board. In our case, right, there's two seats up in a few months. A board can change dramatically, very quickly, particularly when all you're talking about is a majority, very quickly. It's blink of an eye, two years, three years. And, and when it comes to what you're talking about, and I, I totally understand this, when you're talking about crimes being committed, I have not seen, and if you have, tell me, with the exception of Coria, who has not yet been, whereas he's been indicted. Coria, he's been indicted, but not, it's not confirmed, situations where anyone who was found to be actually committing a crime did not then, a, a crime against the community, did not then end up resigning, leaving the community. Now, if somebody is in, I think you brought up in jail, they're actually not residing in the community anymore. I don't know the answer to that. I think that's a little gray area, a little too far with this, but, no, I, I'm, I'm just always gonna be against recall. I wish there had been a resident petition, because I do think that's where something like this starts.
I thought there was going to be. I thought that was the understanding.
Well, I think there still could be. Some towns end up having resident petitions at every meeting without fail. Uh, we're, it's a little rare here. For whatever reason, in Rutland, we don't see as many resident petitions as some towns do.
That's right, that, there was going to be a petition generated to be put on the.
No, there, there could be, but those are two separate things. And in point of fact, you could have a resident petition, and we could still place this. If this board, as a majority, votes to place it, it's gonna get placed, whether there had been a, a resident petition or not. And then what would happen is typically the resident petitions are at the end. If action is taken that substant, substantially, substantively, you know, covers the issue, well.
Yes.
Can I, I just want to add one quick comment. I, I think a lot of those issues are answered on the parameters of whatever you have for, what do you call it, a buy.
whether you call it a bylaw or whatever you call it. I think those, a lot of those questions are answered in that. Um, and my second thought is, I don't think we have enough time to do this for special town meeting. If in fact it's gonna go forward, it, it's just too late. Um, it's just too close. We don't have enough time to, to get anything, any documents, to review them. Um, so we're gonna, we're gonna get two rocks.
Can we put this on an agenda to at least discuss it as we move forward with this? Is this something that the chair would put on an agenda for discussion for best practice for other communities?
I, I mean, the door is open now and particularly, you know.
So you will put it on an agenda if I were to.
Yeah, I mean, we put it on and now we're talking about other things that might get moved to May, right? This was a request.
No, no, not on the war, I'm talking about on these, a normal selectword agenda.
Yes, and I'm saying, the door is open now. And, and there are multiple areas I think we should probably get some information from. I think probably, you know, reaching out to Ken Ferguson's office as well because we'll need their support to get that put through. If it went, you know, a, a resident petition would as well to get it passed through the legislature. Um, I think Oxbridge waited a long time before they saw some action. Um, so.
I, that. I'm willing to rediscuss it at, at the Thursday or make the call, move on.
Well, we got a lot to do Thursday, I think. A future meeting would be better than Thursday.
Well, it's, it's on our draft. Everybody has seen this draft. Certainly this would come up as part of the discussions. And it might be that, I think you said FinCom was sort of waiting to see what our discussion would bring out.
Yeah.
So it's, you know, w- whether or not Planning Board ends up having anything to say about it, I don't know if you guys are gonna be talking about it. Um, or Board of Health, I don't know. And I think we heard from Anita, we got the, the number, which is pretty much her concern. Alright, what are we doing? It's our last one. We've tabled a few.
I mean, it's gotta be tabled. I mean, we have nothing in front of us to.
Okay, but we're not killing it, right? We're gonna, let's see how Thursday goes. Mike, we are definitely posting for Monday?
Yep.
Yep. I think our best case scenario is if Thursday is just going remarkably smoothly and we end up being able to place the rest or make a decision on the rest and we can cancel Monday. Is that, are you okay with that? Yes, no?
Yeah.
Okay, we still have executive session.
Can I have a public comment?
Yes. Name and address.
Leroy Clark, Rutland, one ninety-nine, Lenderwood. So would you accept the citizen petition with less than required signatures?
We can't skip, you know, the deadline has passed.
Okay, yeah, no, fine.
How many did you need? How many signatures did you need?
Not committee.
I think it, I think it would be worth checking to see if those signatures will be still valid for the next meeting. And I, I mean, whether it's a special or.
No, there won't be.
They are not valid?
You don't need two, you don't need a hundred and fifty signatures, you only need ten.
Right, you need less in, in May.
Ten.
Whatever. Far less.
I just asked, I just asked, that's okay.
So, did the.
Cause I have all the rules and regulations right here, what it talks to and exactly what Mike was, like, uh, what's the name over there?
So does that? Okay, so does that mean you have language?
Yes, I do.
So I, I mean.
But I can't give, I'm not giving you language where then you don't, won't accept my petition.
Okay. Well, it's not that we won't, it's that the warrant has closed.
Okay, you can, you can hold it.
But, I mean, it's why we put the placeholder on. We're, you know, and the other thing is, a petition, as you know, resident petitions do not get legal review. So, you know, had the petition been ready, it would have gone on, um, could, still could have been a placement from this board.
Yeah, but if you would have helped along the way, it would have been easier too, you know? So that's, you know, there. You all have a great night.
Alright, it's good.
Night. Alright, could I get a motion to go into executive session for all the reasons only to return for adjournment?
Motion to go into executive session.
You have to read them out, sorry.
Sorry?
You have to read them out, I apologize, for the record.
Alright.
Motion to go into executive session for reason number three to discuss.
Close the door my way out.
Thanks, Dick.
Thanks, Dan.
To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If in open meeting they have a detrimental effect on the government's bargaining or litigation position.
As I'm not gonna say, just don't forget about the ag commission.
Also, to conduct strategy session, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-unit personnel to actually conduct collective bargaining and contract negotiations with non-unit personnel. Reason number one, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition or mental health rather than the professional competence of the individual. And reason number six, to consider the purchase, exchange, taking, lease or value of real property if such discussion may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the governmental body.
Only to return for adjournment.
Second. Only to return for adjournment.
Second. Walker, aye.
Pressed aye.
Waitman, aye.
Stollins, aye.
Dubai.